Little out, sorry. Mr. Long, you're good to go.
Evening, everybody. Like to call the April 25th, 2022, the school committee of order. First time in two years I've been able to be in person with. The microphone's actually over there. I'll try to speak out, but the seats in the front. This is the first time we've been able to be in person in two years. Now that we have, you know, the event Zoom meetings has been a huge help. We've usually had between forty and fifty people who aren't presenting be able to attend our meetings. So we wanted to make sure that with that capability, we had that up and running before we'd come back in person. Now that we have that, you know, happy to be back in person as well as being online. Since this is our first meeting back in person, probably get through all the technologies as seamless as possible. We apologize if there are any any issues. We'll continue to work through them. Public comment will be available both for people in person as well as through the Zoom. We'll make sure people will be able to unmute and make a public comment whether they're on Zoom or in person. But pick off the meeting. The Citrus School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, all participants, including marginalized and minoritized community to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit to these standards and to support and respect our community. As I said, public comment will be available both through the Zoom and for people in person. Community members can also email me at mlong@cit.org with any questions where they can read. So the first item on our agenda is celebrating student success. So I'll turn it over to the question staff.
Okay, hopefully we won't have any technological issues with this. Still trying to figure some of it out. For tonight for Cushing, I'm Kate Martin, a fourth grade teacher.
I'm Carrie Phillips. I'm the literacy specialist at Cushing.
And I'm Stacey Sweeney, one of the other literacy specialists at Cushing.
And we're going to be telling you all about our Spring into Action project. So at Cushing School, our PBIS committee and PBIS is the Positive Behavior Intervention System. So we created a system in September of 2018 in which all of our students are randomly sorted, think Harry Potter, into houses. We do it for all kindergarteners and then any student who joins us new each year. And the house that they're sorted into, they stay in that house for all of their years at Cushing School. And then as a house, they can earn points. And then at the end of each month, we celebrate the points that they've earned. And every staff member in the building is able to award students points. Our sort of school motto, the houses are cat houses. So we are the Cushing cats. And all students know that cats stand for caring citizens who act with respect while trying our best in a safe school. And our four cat houses are the cougars, lions, jaguars, and tigers. And each house does have its own color to kind of bring house unity. Throughout the month, we do tally the points that the houses earn. Teachers can use class dojo. We have one specifically set up for the houses. The middle picture shows our lunchroom. We have coins and so they can be handed a coin for doing something. And then they put it in and we count up the coins. And then in a lot of the younger grades, it's so visual, they use the tally system. And then at the end of each month, we take all of the points, add them all up to figure out which house has the most. And then each month, we have a house, we have a community meeting. And the champions for each house, each month, we do have these beautiful flags. And so we have a pajama day for that house. A different day of the month, they get a hat day. Their favorite is every Friday, they get to be first in line to get their pizza. It's the one thing they are so excited about. And then we display their house flag in the lobby. And the nice thing is we say for pajama day, for example, we'll say, if you see someone in pajamas today, and they're, they're probably a cougar, so congratulate them on on being the house champions. It's a nice kind of visual for everyone to see who the champions were. Our PTO did supplies with these beautiful tie dye T-shirts. And we were having our community gatherings outside before we were allowed to have them inside. When we have our gatherings, we strongly suggest that the students wear their house color. So that when you look around, you can see all the cougars and the green, for example. Depending on where we are protocol wise, we can base it together as houses, which is a very fun way. We'll say all of the cougars, we show your paws and you get excited together. And depending on what's happening in the building, we either share things that are going on or we set goals for improving behavior. For example, if we think it's a little loud in the lunchroom, we'll set a whole classroom school goal on improving something from month to month. And our, one of our favorite things is the help of the wonderful Mr. Munt. We have appeals to the whole neighborhood. Mr. Munt works really hard with the students from kindergarten on so that they learn the song and then we all sing it together. And then at the end of the meeting, we always announce who our house champ is for the next month. So we decided to come up with a project for students. And we found this book called Change Things. It's by Amanda Corman. And the PTO was kind enough to purchase a book for every teacher, our art teacher, our music teacher, and the librarian. So all teachers could read the book to the students. We of course connected it to our standards. For example, first graders would read the poem and talk about feeling words and how it appeals to your senses. Yet fifth graders would look at the theme of the poem and dive into the characters of the poem and how it challenges the speaker, how the speaker challenges how the speaker in a poem reflects upon that topic. So we picked this book because it was written by Amanda Corman and she's the youngest presidential inaugural poet in history. You can all remember.
And just to, oh yeah, a little thing, one of the things that, for example, I discussed in my fourth grade classroom is the idea of how many obstacles she's overcome in her life. And if you've seen her speak and you don't know this, you might be amazed to find she actually had a speech impediment and she was not able to pronounce her own last name until she was in her twenties. And she listened to music and poems and practiced reciting them. And she credits Hamilton for helping and was able to overcome her speech impediment to become such an eloquent speaker. So then we talk about her character traits and kind of dive into who we think she is as a person based on that. And kids were able to, you know, talk about her perseverance and how determined she is.
And we prepared a special treat for you. The children, some children reading the book. And we picked by houses. So they, each child, before they read, they'll introduce themselves to you and what house they're from.
Hi, I'm Georgia Ditas. And I'm a tiger and I'm reading Change Things by Amanda Corman. I can hear change humming in its loudest, proudest song. I don't fear change coming, and so I sing along. I scream with the skies of red and blue streamers. I dream with the cries of tried and true dreamers. I'm a chant that ro- that rises and rings. There's hope where my change sings. Though some don't understand it, those windmills of mysteries, I sing with the planet and all hills of histories.
I am pretty boring. I'm, I'm a lion and I'm reading Change Things by Amanda Corman. I hum with a hundred hearts, each of us lifting a hand. I use my strengths and my smarts to take on you to make a stand. I'm as bright as the light each day brings. There's love when my change sings. I show others tolerance, though it might take some courage. I don't make a tall offense, but fight to build a better bridge.
Hi, my name is Henry and I'm from Jack, I am in the Jaguars. I talk not only for distances from where and how we came. I also walk our differences to show we are the same. I'm a moment, a movement that roars and springs. There's a wave where my change sings. Change sings where? Inside, inside, there, inside me. Because I'm the change I want to see. As I grow, it grows like seeds. I am just what the world needs.
I'm Eli and I'm in the Cougars. I'm the voice where freedom rings. You are the love bright, your bright heart brings. We are the waves starting to spring, for we are the change we sing. Where that world is becoming and we know it, it won't be long. We all hear change strumming, won't you sing along?
Those were all third graders. And as you heard throughout the book, there were many lessons to be learned as the students read that book. And not only did all of the teachers work using this book in their literary standards and life lessons, we also had our wonderful art teacher, Ellen Davis, connect it to art. She, um, she's working with some fourth graders who volunteered their time to make a mural for our cafeteria. And you can see them working there now. It's Megan Woods, Nola Kudlasic, Gillian Gallagher, Phoebe Resika, Abby McCarrio, Amelia Visco, and Avery Whiting. And Mr. Munt also made musical connections. He's teaching classes using folk music that's platable in social justice movements. So we have wonderful projects started to, and that flows throughout the entire community. And it's rare to find a book that is appropriate for grades K to five. But this one certainly fit the bill. And the message of the book was to be the change that you want to see in the world. So we tapped into our houses and we started a project called Spring into Action. And of course, we started it at the beginning of spring and late March. And in this project, we wanted to build upon the idea of the students being caring citizens. They are caring citizens within their own classroom, within their school, but also within their town and their state and their country and their world. So we sort of challenged them to actually do something, to take some action. So we identified four local nonprofit organizations. And we invited our older cats, grades four and five, to vote or prioritize those four organizations to see which their houses would support. And so we're going to have students tell you what their cause was. So the cougars.
My name is Mesa and I am a cougar. The Cituwea Animal Shelter finds families to adopt homeless animals. It helps needy families or senior citizens care for their pets so they don't have to give them up.
My name is Chris and I am a Jaguar. Oops, hope happens here. Give help to needy families and reach it out with acts of kindness for people who may be lonely.
My name is Tegan and I am a lion. Rolling Wave repairs donated bikes and gives them to other, and other items to very needy people. A bike can be a ticket to a new life, giving someone a way to get to work or school.
My name is Jordan and I am a tiger. Citrafood pantry offers groceries to make sure that no Citra family ever goes to bed hungry.
Okay, so our four houses, we're going to be supporting four local nonprofits. And we really drove home the message to the children that this was not going to be a competition between the houses, but instead an opportunity to sort of divide and conquer and support four worthy organizations instead of just one. We reached out to families and sent out a message and we of course were, as always, so grateful to the generosity of Cushing families. We had communicated with the organizations and asked what their wish list items were and what were they most in need of. So for one week's time at the beginning of April, the students, when they arrived in the morning, had these boxes set up in the lobby. And each house had their own box, but again, we weren't looking for them to compete with each other. And we also wanted to really encourage the children to give of themselves, that a very small donation that is actually their own donation is more meaningful than a large donation given by a parent. So a lot of the donations that came in were like adorable little crinkled up dollar bills, like clearly they had been in a kindergartner's hand or the tooth fairy had just delivered it. And it was so just sweet and, and genuine that children really embraced the notion that everybody can make a difference. So we collected items for that one week's time. We decided to limit it to one week just to keep the excitement and the motivation high. And now we've delivered all of our collections to those four organizations in town. And all in all, this was the first year that we've ever done anything like this, but we loved having the whole school community, you know, team up to actually take some action and, and do something to spring into action. So we want to thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share and if anyone has any questions or comments for us.
This was a great presentation and a great thing for the kids to be able to do. So thank you for sharing this, for listening.
Thank you.
Any questions? Tell me, Thomas.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Yeah, I would say too, this was, I mean, especially given our hybrid nature, well done on the, got lots of things to navigate there, so. And I will say, as Henry said in the video about the change he needed, I think this is just what I needed tonight. So thank you for bringing that to us tonight. Um, I wanted to, if you wouldn't mind, many families in town have been asking about reading curriculum and choosing books and age appropriate and how this happens. And I feel like this is such a great example of the work that you're trying to do. And I, I heard you allude to it and I was wondering if you could just briefly unpack a little bit more about the process because you mentioned, you know, that you matched it to the standards, which sounds like that's age appropriate. So talking about, you know, the first graders focusing on senses, whereas the fifth grader were focusing on themes. And then you mentioned book selection was around Amanda Corman and her significance to the country. And so could you just talk a little bit more about sort of that behind the scenes process? So we as a community can just understand that, that work that you do?
You know, there's a lot that goes into it. I think one of the things we always start with are the standards. That's kind of any teachers go to. And then looking for something that might carry across all the standards. I mean, reading standards tend to be a little bit easier. Although with most of them, what they learn in kindergarten or first grade, you take that and you build upon it in the next year and the next year. So with something like a picture book, as long as the language isn't too difficult, it's not too long, you can usually find a way to connect with all of those different standards. And then, you know, we would review it in advance to make sure it follows all of those things. And so I would say definitely the beginning point is always our standards, which, you know, are so easily accessible right online.
There's usually just sort of a wow factor about a book. You know, there can be something that just reaches out and touches your heart. And this book definitely did that for us. We talk about books as windows and mirrors. So this book, you know, served to be both. The children saw children like themselves, but also different from themselves. And that message was able to make sense to K to five. The older children really were challenged to think about, how does this connect to what we've learned about social justice? And the idea of collaborating within your community. So it's sort of, the book almost called out to us more than we chose it. You know, it was sitting there in Target and it was like, oh, I missed it. Like it, you know, it just really right away struck a chord with us.
And with her being a young author, most of the kids, when I said the name, for example, they didn't remember who she was. And then I put her picture up and they're like, oh, that yellow jacket. Like they remembered her. We actually in my classroom watched a clip of her on the news talking about the process of writing the book and about her own struggles. And then for fourth grade and fifth grade, it's so easy for them to say, oh, well, when I was younger, I couldn't do blah, 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 and I learned how. So they were able to make a lot of personal connections to it. I think when we were looking for a book, a picture book, specifically, any way that they can find themselves in it, like Stacy's at the window. And with that one, there's so, it's so broad. And they can, and I don't know if it's, if you don't have the book, you should get it. But if you watch, she picks people up as she goes and at the end they've created a band. So there's a music connection that was somewhere excited about. And then for elementary students, they start playing instruments in fourth and they play in fifth. So sometimes it was their instrument that was on the page and they've made that connection.
And the art, the art, beautiful artwork throughout the entire book that Ellen Davis could really sink her teeth into and get a project up there. You know, to also add on to, to your question, we read a lot of kids' books. A lot of kids' books. And we, we will try to see where our curriculum is, is lacking. What standards aren't we exactly hitting to the best that we can? And we, and we want to bring in new literature, always. As, as teachers, we are always reading new, new literature. And we will spend our summers reading books and trying to figure out and vetting them, really. We, we put a lot of time into it, put post-it notes on pages that there's things that we want to discuss with each other. So a ton goes into, into it.
What was lovely was that the books were distributed at a community meeting. So they looked around the room. We said, okay, look at your teacher. And all of the teachers held up the book at the same time. And we really were grateful that Principal Moffett, right from the very beginning, when we presented this idea, she, you know, both supported us and guided us while trusting us to kind of, you know, shape it as we went along. So we were really grateful.
And it was a collaboration between the literacy and our PBIS committee, which is always nice to be able to tie them together.
Thanks. You're getting a great return. They're invested with the art, the music, the literacy, the reading.
And we have such great teachers who are willing to jump in with all of those projects. What can we do to make it better? How can we help you?
Yeah, thank you.
No, I guess, I guess I wanted to comment, I said this, I feel like this is exactly what as a member of the school committee, we're trying to bring throughout the district. So thank you for showing, you give us really a lot of great background in what you're doing, how you're going about it. Just, I'm just rereading this here that this started in 2018. So it's really been a couple of mostly.
The houses.
The houses.
Yes.
And then, so the kids get, are assigned a house in kindergarten, they just stay in house.
We have a sorting ceremony where there's a nag and they get to go up, they reach in and they pull out a card. And then they're like, I'm a cougar. And then we have them all sit together. So it's already building that. And then when they walk in the hall or they might have an older brother who's a cougar or, yeah.
No, so I, and the reasons for, for creating it, I think are pretty clear. But can you, I guess, give, share one positive outcome that has happened as a result of this? Have you seen changes in kids' behaviors or have you seen? You know, I think that we can see it with, with the, I like the idea of the nonprofits and doing that. Was there some, maybe one particular situation or a handful of situations where you had some concerns with a group of students and you saw that once they were identified and carried through, you know, with, with this group that really supports them.
It's very motivating act for the children, like using the best of that positive reinforcement and a little bit of positive peer pressure. Like they love when someone at their lunch table earns a house point for their house. They really, and they support each other. We're always careful at the end when the house champions revealed, we emphasize like, we're happy for others when something good happens to them. So we're all going to clap, whichever house this is. And we really truly do make it be whoever has earned the most points. It isn't a, well, it's the lion's turn. They have to actually earn it. And we did have a long time where it was the same house two months in a row.
Yeah.
And they were like, what?
And, you know, I think because we do have the community meetings, we are able to, as a PBIS committee and as a staff, talk about where are we seeing some places that we need to review. And beginning of the year, we go through, you know, we'll talk about caring citizens. We'll have a whole meeting, what does it mean to be a caring citizen in your classroom, in our school? So we target things like walking in the hallway. And, and if they're, kids will come back to the room and go onto the nurse or something and say, I got a house point because I held the door for a teacher. Teaching them those things that like you do hold doors for people behind you. So I think, you know, Stacy kind of alluded to the little bit of peer pressure. They want, being first in line on Fridays to get your pizza is the biggest, like, if you wouldn't think it'd be that big a deal, but that is what they are so excited about. So it really do, they, they work together. If you kind of say, I'm seeing something here, Rebecca. Would, we do, we don't do it often, but if it's bad enough, we do give them, we do take away points. So we'll say, ooh, I don't want to have to take away a point. And they're all like, no. So it does, there, you know, that works well in the cafeteria, it's large gathering places.
We do so in our small group.
Yes, we do.
And it's, it works wonders in our small group because that's the end to say, yes, at the end of the group, they can earn a point.
And we announce midway through the month, here are the totals so far. I know in my classroom, the kids will always ask me, so when are they doing right now? And I'll say, but I don't have the tallies. I don't know. But we try to in the middle of the month, let them know how they're doing.
Tell them every point matters. We want them to understand that every choice they make makes a difference and there are consequences for our choices. And we've even had children come up and say, can you give her a house point? Because I didn't have anyone to sit with on the bus and she invited me to sit with her. You know, so they've really internalized what it means.
And they know who the members of their house are from other grades. So they'll say, oh, that fifth grader, he, he's also a cougar. And they get excited. Yeah.
I think it's great. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I guess you kind of answered my question I had was it becomes one house and comes, it's all great.
Yes, yes, about as long as each grade.
That's so great because I think the older kids, I love seeing like the older kids mixed with younger kids, like they, you know, take them away and, you know, the younger kids look back to the older kids.
Yes. Yes.
To create responsibility and experience with that. But I also want to say that I love the comment that moves over windows and mirrors. It's, I, I just thought that was so true.
It's so cool with some of these presentations that we've seen. It's, you know, science was connected to art and it was a big presentation. You had three different, uh, subjects come together and really get the critical parts. It's starting to say that, look, reading a book and then answering questions on it, they're coming back to really applying it across the board, which is, is only going to help them because they get a point. This, this is awesome. Thank you for, we, we don't normally see things like this. You know, we, but they, you know, really hear how this is coming out. We're having to get back on students. I mean, this is, this is amazing. So thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, our student advisors cannot be here tonight. We put that on the, um, but we're gonna skip that on the agenda tonight. Uh, but next Monday agenda is, um, a presentation on the state of the school from, uh, kind of like, so turn it over to Principal Warren.
Um, top act. I just do my. Well, good evening and thank you so much for having me tonight. Um, tonight I get to present on behalf of the Haveli team. What you are going to hear about and, um, the pieces I'm going to share do not happen by one person. They happen by every member of the staff. Um, and it really, it's impressive when I sit down and I try to write everything, but try to, had to flip it. Because I can be like, oh, I want to tell them that and that. But, um, so when I went through, uh, when I went through and, um, this is just the introduction to the Haveli school. Um, really, when we work with kids at the Haveli school, we want to make sure that we're working with the whole child. We want to make sure that we are creating kids who are critical thinkers. But there are also those citizens that are going to move in next door to you someday and are going to be great neighbors. They're going to be the kids that are out on the playground cheering somebody else on. Um, and that they're learning and they're not doing the lessons, but instead learning through doing activities and having hands-on, the hands-on approach. I know that I would have the opportunity to listen to my two colleagues, um, Donna Moffett and Tracy Reer, we are to, um, come and present to you. So when I was putting together my presentation, I decided I didn't need to say the same exact things. But I want to acknowledge to you and the community that consistency in the elementary schools is happening and it's work, but we, we all believe in it. Um, but you might not see some things that they said simply because they already said it. Um, so Eureka, Hegelish, Foundations, the Literacy Pilot were covered in the last few presentations. If you have questions about them, whatever they say, I say ditto and I'm happy to answer questions. But, um, I really wanted to highlight not just things that are happening at Haveli, but maybe some things that I know are also happening at the other, um, elementary schools, but they just couldn't fit them in their presentation. Because this is a little boss when you sit down and start telling them all those things you have to do. Um, so collaboration was the first pillar that we worked on as a district. And we really at the Haveli School work well as expected as a staff. But we wanted to make sure that coming out of COVID, it is time to make sure we're collaborating with families again. We had, um, a fabulous school that parents came in. Um, we, the year before COVID started, we initiated a book and had every family come in the morning and read with their own student in the book. And then they took the book home. COVID hit and that was it. People had to, had to speak to us through a microphone. So as you can see in the first one, um, one of the things that we have done to bring back collaborative families is we have a monthly engagement workshops, workshop at the school. So each month we have, um, a different topic. Parents, you don't need to sign up. You just come if you want to come. Um, we've done reading with your child, we've done homework tips, we've done, um, we discussed the peer data, um, and how we're using it at the Haveli School. This will continue. We'll have one in the evening in June and that is going to be focused on summer reading. How do you have your child summer read? How do you sit with a child who stumbles over reading? Um, and that's really to continue to collaborate with families. We also, um, have a number of opportunities that have come back to the Haveli School. We want to welcome parents back in our doors. So currently we've had student celebrations, we've had publishing parties. Um, we have parents that volunteer and, and in a few minutes, I'm going to tell you about independent reading. Anybody that stands still long enough next to me knows I believe in independent reading. Um, but we have parents who come in and listen to, just sit and listen to kids read, which is just such an important thing. Uh, we have mystery readers. Kids love when they find out, oh, it's my mom or my dad or my grandma, whoever it may be. We have parents that are coming into volunteer centers. We will have a book fair in June, um, that will be during the day and then the evening. And, um, we'll have parents, uh, volunteers there as well. Another way that we collaborate is we use data teams. Um, at the Haveli School, we use what's called the driven, data-driven dialogue protocol. I know that in situ, everyone in situ, um, at least, um, people in two thousand sixteen were trained. I was not here at that time, but I had already done a ten-day training on that protocol. And I believe it really, really helps you to look at kids cross, um, the whole grade and look at every child. So, um, in that protocol, some of the things you do are you predict results before you even start working with all of the data that you collected. And that really is so that you're thinking about what are you going in? What are your preconceived thoughts that you're starting this process with? You go visual and that's really, you, you get to know information better when you are hands-on in it. Um, you observe, when you observe, you just look at the facts. There's no because. Nobody had a bad day, that day, nope. What do you see and what are the facts? And then we analyze and we say, okay, I might that have happened. What else do we need to be doing for these kids to make sure that they're moving? Anytime we do this protocol, we always use three or four indicators. And that's simply because you can't use one assessment and be like, oh, you just can't. Um, you know, you really need to dig deeper and you have to have a cross-section. What if it was a bad day? That flushes itself out a few indicators. Um, and the results of doing data teams are, um, we create interventions as well as our win groups, which I also will address as we get going. Uh, measurements, we use minutes from the meetings, we used our data sheets, we, um, survey, a survey of the participants, just what can we tweak? Like now we've gone digital, we used to have post-its everywhere. Now we've all went through that process enough that we go digital. Um, elementary leadership is certainly, um, a collaboration that we really do need. We meet every Monday morning, uh, we meet other times, but Monday morning we just calibrate. Okay, so we went to DLT last week and everybody's doing this. Well, we have to then figure out how four of us are doing it the same way. So we meet Monday morning just to make sure. We really are trying for that consistency. Um, the ST, um, meetings that we have, another way that we collaborate, um, this again, it's something all elementary schools do. We have these meetings, um, and they are facilitated at the Haveli School and I believe all schools at, by the school psychologist. But anyone who interacts with any student, um, being brought to an ST team, you know, is invited. I go to all of them, but kind of go there. Anyhow, um, but when they go in, they, they just present and they say, I, I'm working with this child. I've tried this, 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 and this. I'm not seeing any other ideas. And those professionals in the room brainstorm. We come up with the goal and we try to figure out what ways can we possibly help that student? And then we meet again in six weeks just to say, okay, it didn't work. What do we need to tweak? Like we take attendance for those things. Well, was he at school? Was the teacher in school? What might have impacted him? We tweak or we say, yay, it's working and we move along. Um, the next, oh, I'm gonna ask if I can move Seth's box. But, um, the next pillar is the culture of excellence. And here I need to give a little bit of credit, um, Carrie Bepowski is on my school council. So she certainly has helped me to think through what does excellence mean? And for the sake of thi- this presentation and what we do in our school, um, we, we really believe that's performing above and beyond expectations. So in here, I wanted to share a few ways that we are doing this. Um, each month we give out certificates of excellence to students. And that is anything, any staff member in the building can, can put in a child's name. We share, um, each Monday morning I do a, I read a book to the whole school and it's on the same theme. Um, and during that meeting, once a month, I announce to the kids why they're, they're growing. And it could be anything. Um, the other thing for excellence is that we have high expectations for all. There was a time in public education that a lot of, uh, if a starting student was working in a book, they were working in a book that was not at grade level. We now know that kids need to be exposed to grade level materials. Yes, they also need to work at levels of their own, but they need both. For instance, I went into a grade four classroom today and there were three groups going on and they were all reading the book Ember. And that's a high-level book, but when you watched it, it was scaffold for some, it was enriched for others. Um, and that's really what we want. If kids are gonna, um, swell their, um, their vocabulary and you want them to have exposure as they move through the grades. Um, also, uh, the data team, like the same high expectations for all. We don't just look to see who's struggling. If you are really doing well, are you still growing? We don't want anybody treading water waiting for everybody else to catch up. We need to make sure everybody's growing. PBIS is a place that we celebrate excellence. Um, that, each month we use a theme. Right now we're doing empowerment. Uh, we have, this is a place that we teach kids explicitly, instruct kids on, um, how to be, uh, have social skills, how to be a good citizen. And then we help them excel at, at doing, um, applications of skills. Can we give an example? Um, student-led groups is another place. Kids that excel, we have a group of third graders who want to try the newspaper. They started their own group and they write a newspaper and it's beautiful. Um, that's just one more way that kids don't have to wait and have their teacher tell them what they're going to do. It's what they're going to be excelling. That homework group is another way. This empowers fifth graders to take time. They have the ability to know the math specialist and do their homework. And I think that helps them to excel in their own way. Um, and take ownership of excelling, like I know I need this, I'm gonna get down. And they're happy as could be, head down the hallway to do their homework at, I mean, at lunchtime. Communication, I think that it's really important that when we say about excelling, um, we're talking about everyone and that's it. Everyone excels at a different level. So communication, the reason I brought this one up is because we have our kindergarteners are learning how to use one of the, um, um, audio devices. So if you have a child in a kindergarten who's an audio player. So everyone is learning how to interact and speak with her so that she can excel at communication. And I think that those pieces are so, so important. Um, what I win is in my last slide and I'll explain it more. But, um, what I need is not because I'm struggling. What I need is because that's what I need. It might be, we have kindergarteners reading Magic Tree House because that's what they need. And if you don't know my magic trees, I was gonna say it's about an M, which probably doesn't help me to learn. Um, but it's like a second, third grade book. But they're ready, able, and we want the kids who need to be fluency, they're getting that. But we want the other kids to get what they're needing too. So that's why we have the win. Um, so sadly, you can't see under Seth's box, but that is another child who is excelling. Um, and you can see his feet. He's bad at, he's bad at a wheelchair and he's learning to move his legs. He is excelling.
He is excelling.
He is excelling by his own bar and it's just amazing to see. I did have permission to say that on TV. Um, and the other corner, you don't need to move your box, Seth, but it's just these certificates of kids. We take a big picture each time we do the, um, monthly certificates of, um, excellence. Right, I'm almost saying, don't worry. Um, personalization. Personalization is elementary school. But I got two boxes, so I had to do two things to try to show you. Um, independent reading. Every grade level at the Haveli School has a box, a block built in for reading. One of the biggest things is we don't want to teach kids to read. We want to teach kids to be readers. Um, and this block allows them the time. I want to be clear first, this is not silent reading. Silent reading research shows does not work because most of them are good pretend readers. They know how to make, they move eyes, move. Um, this is reading out loud. And this is their chance to pick the book they want to read. And anybody on PTO knows, come over at the door like, can we get more books? Because kids want new books. Not, none of us go to the library and pick up the yellow book, right? That one that you're like, oh. Um, kids don't want to read them. We want new books, rich books that they all are like, when can I have that book to read? Um, and this is their time. It's a thirty-minute block in most grades kindergarten, it's fifteen minutes. And, uh, the superintendent will tell you, Pete, when he comes to visit, I always have him in a room for a few minutes to sit and listen. We have family volunteers now that come in. That's what they do. They just sit, they pop around the room and they listen to kids read their books of choice. Um, the teachers all have conversations with kids about the books that they have chosen to read. It's hard to have time to be, to have conversations with kids that are really just about them. This is their opportunity. Um, they read aloud. Um, this allows educators to take running records. That's simply how does, how does this child improve? It also helps them to be able to, um, be able to decide is this the right book? Help the child learn how to match to a book. Because everybody's got Harry Potter in the desk, you know? But there's those kids that can read that and others that you're like, let's go backwards and take this home and someone will read it. Um, and I, I often hear in these meetings, well, COVID, how did COVID impact students? There it is, is how they are able to remain focused on a task that drastically, everybody could see the difference. Kids left at home and had, had stamina for staying on task. And when they came back, there's definitely a difference. So this gives us that opportunity to try to build it back in. Um, the other piece, the last one, but personalization is, I already started to tell you about, is the win law. And again, that's across all elementary schools. This is both in math and in reading. And really what we are doing in that, um, block, we use our data-driven dialogue to decide groups, to decide a focus in a group. This is above and, uh, uh, above what we do for reading instruction or math instruction. And it is those kids that are working on fluency. Even that same grade, these kids at first grade, we have a fluency group. But we also have, um, perception. They're, they're reading to decide, um, what the perspective of the reading is, which is incredible. And we want to make sure we have those levels and that's what win gives us. Um, it said how we measure and I'm a, a data person, so I did pretty well only that one box of data. But, um, I just, when you put all of these pieces together, you can see the kids are learning. Um, I tried to use, we have multiple measures that we use. We never use one measure. But I did try to at least put in, the STAR is a reading comprehension program that's on the computer. And you can just see, um, how they've grown from September to, um, these are marked because we obviously haven't done June yet. But I just thought you would like to see that it's working and they are growing. Um, the, we have all this data from years past. So what I do is in June, I will send it all to Ryan Beatty and that way if he ever has a student and he wants to look or he wants to know how this group of students did, I have it. The Haveli School has it for all of the students. Um, so what's next? We really want to increase parent engagement opportunities. We want to have opportunities for parents to be here, um, at, be in the school to help us, for us to help at home. If there's things that we could be teaching, that makes it easier when you go to do homework. Um, we are piloting literacy programs at the elementary level. You know, we need, really need to choose one that creates critical thinkers. Again, we want to teach reading, but we want to create readers even more so. Um, and we wanted, want to continue to empower students to make their voices heard. That newspaper club that thinks, uh, we need this to happen. I, we have a recess committee that has decided that like what we need to do to be there for recess. And it's wonderful. And they know better. I don't, I go out to recess and I'm not figuring out what we're doing. And they really do already know. And final, I just wanted to say thank you and show, um, this is one of our community. Laura Burton is our art teacher, phenomenal person. Laura Burton is our art teacher, phenomenal person. Um, and we had this for the month of February. Every person who walked through our door was invited to put a heart up on our community board. Um, unfortunately, you've missed it because Laura Burton also is always moving and that's been taken down and replaced. At that, everything, how about everything?
Great. Well, thank you for, uh, sharing that presentation with us today. Uh, I'll turn it over to the committee. Ready for questions, or comments they have?
The, um, slide that showed the improvement is for reading, for the, um, um, I just wanted to say that I've heard of almost identical improvements in reading that from what I need from and others. So, you know, I think it's great because I think a lot of parents, you know, with COVID that, you know, kids had a problem behind, so this program, you know, at least we're capturing. And, uh, so there's kids might be struggling, helping them, so. But that's to see that it's happening, you know, across the board.
It is across the board. And we, we work together. We're like, okay, what, you know, have you made any tweaks that maybe we wanna make at Hatherley? Or vice versa with, um, yes, and then the data teams that have been at all as well.
And do you want to say that, you know, in over, over the years, that parents, you know, we, we wanted to see the same things happening at every elementary school because they end up at the same middle school. So it's important that when they get to sixth grade, that they're all, you know, have the same plane, level playing field. Um, so that this is great progress towards that, um.
I think it helped a lot too. We all hit, well, three of us came in at the same time. So, and now Tracy has joined who's just a Hatherley's team member.
Yeah, thank you.
I actually have a follow-up to that. Um, I think I, that same, um, data grade one deposit in terms of students who are, you know, reading benchmarks and whatnot, but a follow-up to that, and this is more just so that I can understand and maybe the other folks is, though the numbers are good, it definitely shows improvement. There's still, you know, between twenty and thirty percent of kids who are not meeting benchmarks. So what's kind of the process, um, of helping those students achieve the benchmarks? Whether it's by the end of the year or whether it's as they transition to the next grade, kind of what supports are they getting and what are they identifying?
So for some of those, I would say two different things. One, you'll go back, so that is one snapshot. So when I look back at that data, like for instance, um, I can read one of my notes, but so at second grade, um, it might show that we have, that we haven't quite, don't have all of those kids that percentage. But we have kids that have been in that twenty-five percent that are not there. I don't have the number in front of me. Um, but they have made the growth, like they're almost there. So what we're doing for those kids are, first of all, we look at lots of assessments to be like, okay, well, she scored well in comprehension, but her fluency is taking her so long to get through anything that by the time she gets to, to the comprehension, she has to go back. So we know fluency is going to be a problem for her class. So what we do is we have a document that we track what, um, interventions that we're doing and we will continue on with those. And we probably, so we'll do like, we just did a mid-cycle. Um, so that we make sure, okay, well, she was having a hard time in fluency because she needed it. Um, and we do that for all of the grades. Uh, also for like the STAR in the fifth grade, what I noticed when we look at this data is that, um, that is one snapshot. So we found that day. So what, what you'll see in the sum of that data, which I think will flesh out in June, is, so we're gonna say child, like, you know, he was fine, green, 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 good. Um, and then red, had a red day. But coming to you, I can't say, oh, I think he's fine. Nope, I have to give it up. Uh, so some of that, I think, works itself out as well. But yes, we keep interventions in place. Uh, classroom teachers will meet with the next classroom teachers to say, these are the interventions this child worked on. Keeping everything at a personalized level so that we can make sure we're not like, oh, all right, good luck. Um.
And these are the, this is the entire population. So these are kids on I E Ps, foster children, everybody.
Everybody, yes. Um, we certainly believe that what we want to have happen, um, is everybody to meet that benchmark. Maybe everybody has to do it differently and they're on an I E P to help them get there, but everybody.
I just had two questions, Julie. Um, so thank you for this presentation. You mentioned, um, in the fourth grade, they're reading Embers. I'm very familiar with that with the fourth grader at home. You used two words. You said scaffolded and enriching. And so can you speak a little bit to how the teachers are able to do that sort of differentiation in one class? Are they using the win lock? Are they groups? Like, how is that? Those are two different things that, that the teachers are doing. So can you speak to that just a little bit?
Yeah. So in, um, the fourth grade that I went into today, um, they have inclusion start. So some of those, that kids on I E Ps are working with a special education teacher. Everybody's doing the same thing, but they're into small groups. Um, and that special education teacher, oh, we have three children with her. And they were working on vocabulary. They were working on, um, understanding how the character was feeling, really trying to give some basics so that as they progress through the, uh, book, they understood what was happening. Um, then when you went into, um, to the, the next classroom, they were talking about something that had happened in the book and of course, it's gonna slip in my mind right this minute, but how had that ever happened in their own mind? Like they were putting it into their own words, which is just that level, next level. Um, and the last group was working on, um, pre-reading. So that when they went into doing something writing, they would be, um, they would have some issues. So that just gives them different levels, but they all get to access it.
Yeah, I asked, I asked because I think it's really important that we as a community see sort of what pushing is doing around one book, right?
Mm-hmm.
Matching it to standards and grade and then also at Hatherley, using another book, same book, matching to skill set, right? So the teachers are really, there's a lot going on in terms of matching appropriate reading to age, uh, skills as well as content. So I, I appreciate that example. Um, the other question is a little bit different, but related to your presentation, which is around the collaboration piece. And you talked a lot about how teachers and families are collaborating with the students in mind. And I'm curious, as you know, as a leader of a school, um, I have real concerns. I think the school committee also has real concerns about teachers' support. And I'm wondering if you could speak to how you as a leader and how the teachers are collaborating to support each other, um, not just in, in teaching our students, but also in supporting themselves as they come through a pandemic and grapple with, um, you know, the racial reckoning and other things that are going on. So can you sort of speak to the efforts that are being made at that level?
So I think that across schools, everybody has their own little, um, way that they're doing this. But, um, I have been really working recently, especially coming out now that masks are off, on culture in the community. And that is, every time we have a staff meeting, we start with Hatherley highlights. What is your neighbor doing that is so great? Um, we talk about, okay, is there a personal highlight? Everybody has stuff going on at home. We're people, we're humans with jobs that we, we wanna care about each other as well as, um, everybody else. Having other pieces that are more like making bread. Oh, I put soup for everybody for lunch. That's not true. My father put soup for everybody. I included. Um, those types of things.
Yeah.
The S T team that we spoke about, going to a team and being able to, and that is everybody at grade level books. Um, okay, can you just help me? Because I really want Johnny to do better and I just can't quite make it happen. I, I think supporting each other in that way is so important. Um, so I think that there's so many, a variety of things that we've been trying to do just to help each other out. We did set up a little team that is surprise people that nobody knows who they are and they retreats. There was a certain day they retreats in the, um, in the teachers' room. Like things that we haven't been able to do. And it's funny how when you go into something like COVID, you're like, oh yeah, we used to do that. You know, and we're just trying to pull off those, oh yeah, we used to do that. So.
Yeah, I, yeah, it does. Thank you. And I, and I'm glad to hear that you're sort of reconnecting with the used to-dos. I also hope and encourage you and others to think about what could we be doing that would be different, right? Creating and innovating and looking to other states to see what they're doing to support their teachers. So, um, so thanks for that.
And I think that point about community identity you just brought up was a really good one. We saw the different houses that the kids are sorting in. Um, that story that you brought up about the kindergartners all going to kind of use the same communication device so that that one kid can be included just in the apartment classes. It's such a great story to hear it, you know, bring, bring it all together. Um, I, I think having those student led groups is also a great that sort of kids tell you, it should be ninety percent of the size of the school. But, you know, just helping the kids be able to come in and say, you know, this is what I do. I wanna make it better. Here's how. Like that's, you know, it's, it's skill sets. They're running at a, a small level gap. It's only gonna help them in middle school and high school, especially some of the groups that we know, um, teachers are able to make. And they can hear, hey, this is important for my kids. Build out a after-school group and like, like, you know, really dive into the little part. That's, you know, what we should be doing with our kids. Um, one question I had for you on the, on the benchmarks and it kind of goes with what Mr. Gates had brought up. Um, so I'm sure, you know, unfortunately, there are some kids that you take the tests in September, you take it and they go back a little bit. Can you just talk a little bit about the process, just to, you know, how quickly that is captured in between the, the different, uh, times that these kids get tested? And then, you know, just how the work is done to, to help them throughout that time period to, you know, catch up.
So we do con, progress monitoring on all of, let me backtrack first. It is three times a year that we do all of the data, all of the indicators. So that means that you would have hardly five different assessments. Nobody sat down for five assessments in a day, but over time, and then we, we look at all of those, three times a year. And all we do simply with that is, um, we put up a chart and we put Carrie, 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 Carrie didn't make this benchmark, this benchmark. And we count and we say, oh, she didn't make four. We better make sure what's going on there. Someone didn't make one, they're like, okay, bad day. You know, but we really go back to pay that many checks. What do we need to do? Um, from there, and, uh, for the individual pieces, like for reading fluency, we do progress monitoring. So that happens continually. So every three, four weeks, um, a reading specialist or a staff member sits and does that again. And we print out a trajectory to make sure that they are on track to hit where they need to be. If they're not, it's time for us to come back together and say, okay, maybe we thought it was fluency, but actually their first, their, um, phonemic awareness, for just understanding language, breaking up words, maybe that's what they need. Maybe they need to understand that words are made of sounds. Maybe we need to backtrack and that's what we're gonna do. Until we find a pinpoint point what they really need and then the, um, that's the intervention we're gonna place, cycle starts again, progress monitors and hope that they keep marching forward. And if not, we go right back. So what we don't wanna wait, do is wait till June and be like, oh, we don't want to. That's, so we are continually progress monitoring, um, and reviewing that with teachers and it's teachers doing this. You know, I do part of it, but I'm one person, part of the team. I don't feel like I love any of the kids, so, um, everybody's doing.
Yeah, and at least through my own kids, you know, the teachers are also doing an amazing job of, hey, I think, you know, this student is slipping, this student is slipping a little bit. You're like, I'm working on, you know, make sure you organize at home. So to your point with, you know, the highlights to the South, they, they do a great amount of work. You know, just keeping the parents involved and engaged and making sure that they know what's going on. Instead of just, hey, use your DIBL score, September, March, June, whatever, you know, whatever it's done. So.
And, and they know the kids. Like you can walk in, anybody and say, what's going on with this little person? And that teacher will know exactly what they need, where they're going. It's, it's tremendous what they are able to accomplish.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. That was your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, so next on the agenda, we have our leadership report. So start off with Superintendent Burton.
Thank you. You're welcome. Evening, everyone. Welcome. It's great to be here in person, you know, at home. Good evening. Two tough acts to follow. So I, I think we saw a really good display tonight in person of, of the practical implication of what school is all about. So really nice job, tough acts to follow. I'll do my best with this. Um, what I'll be presenting tonight is the, um, superintendent's self-assessment and goals. Similar to how staff and administrators are evaluated, uh, the superintendent goes through the same thing. Setting goals, a cycle of self-assessments, setting goals, and then presenting to the school committee evidence of those goals. And then getting, uh, feedback. It's the next thing. So, uh, the only major difference, I guess, is this is not in public, which to me is very exciting. A little unnerving last year, but, um, you know, I appreciate it. And, um, so here tonight, what I'd like to do, uh, so that folks know out there that, um, I share with the, uh, school committee, uh, comprehensive document and a self-valuation document for the problem of elementary and secondary education. What I'm trying to do here is take a portion of that and capture as much as I can to highlight some of the things that were accomplished this year. And we'll see in a lot of the clips, I, I put we as capital. Certainly, this isn't just, uh, my doing. It's us. It's we, it's all of you, families, the great teachers we have, our professionals, us, right, we still have administrators, families and especially our students. So I'll dive right in. I'll try to move along as quickly as I can. So just to review, you've heard some connections and I think I was proud to hear the last few state of districts was the, um, we haven't heard the middle and high school yet, we're still more elementary, but it's the consistency. Those really big things that, uh, we've been working on and something I heard a lot of there when applying for this position, uh, is consistency at our elementary schools. And I think we're achieving that and still have a ways to go, but certainly a focus area, something that's really powerful that's presented. And so you'll see a through line of pillars, which are culture of excellence, um, communication, collaboration. And I kind of talked a little bit about it on the left there. I'll summarize some of these slides, like reading slides, I'll show these obviously in public. Um, go through. So here's, here's a encapsulation of the, of the goals. Beginning of the year and they're broken down into student learning, district improvement and professional practice. So now these are district-wide goals and then these trickle down into the leadership team, the central office, and the principals and then through this to teachers and to the students. So the first one talks about, um, I'll just highlight some words. Uh, personal excellence. We heard that personalization tonight from both groups that presented already and from our previous state of districts. Um, high expectations, again, a word that we, um, I don't wanna use, but we wanna back up with our actions and how we do that, how we define it. Engaging in students and culminating in diverse learning styles, needs, interests and levels of readiness. That's our equity. I swear, every single student is at a different place. And we're really big on talking about growth. You know, every student starts a different place, but how do we get them from A to B? Basic fundamental thing is a year's growth, a year's time for every student at minimum. And we can get even more out of those students. That's great. The example that, uh, Ms. Ward gave, uh, students that are maybe a little bit below grade level in reading will be reading at their level to practice their skills, but also be at their grade level where they wanna get to. Kind of push them, you know, at high expectation. The same with all our kids. So that's that in a nutshell. The next one talks about district improvement. There's a little bit of overlap. It just talks about, I think, Dr. Bukowski's question about culture and climate. Um, you know, we've been through, over two years of a, of a pandemic. People are going through a lot of things. Um, that's our teachers, that's our parents, that's our kids. Um, so the big goal this year was to unify folks. That's gonna be an ongoing goal. That's, that's culture. You know, how are things done around here? Simple way to put it. And it's good that we started our state of the schools and the state of districts to give you some examples of that. So where I like to hear is a unifying place where everyone is safe, has a voice and is treated with respect, treated fairly and appreciated. So that's really important to us. It may seem like common sense, but I also, I think, the pushing team gave a great example of, uh, teaching kids, holding the door, please, thank you. All those things that we learned at home and at home, at the schools, those things are reinforced. Very important. And it's for the adults as well and as colleagues and as interaction with communities and with families. Next goal is, uh, next two goals are professional practice goals. So these are goals, um, as the lead educator in the district, it's my job to model and grow as a learner. Uh, and that's why I became a teacher, why I love education. And so these are challenging goals for me. Um, for those that aren't familiar with the Massachusetts New Superintendent Induction Program or NSIP, uh, it's a three-year program that I've, uh, signed up for. I'm in year two. And what that does is it's training for new superintendents. Last year was a lot of introductory methods, uh, and it's taught by a group of retired superintendents. You get your individual coach. We have individual coaching meetings, smaller breakout groups, year two. It's a little more, uh, individualized to you. Uh, so I'll have coaching meetings. I'll have small group meetings with the superintendents and group alike student. So you can talk about, um, you know, things that you're dealing with that are unique to superintendents. So that's, uh, goal in mind to finish that strong this year and then complete it in year three. Next goal is a goal that's, uh, obviously very important for the entire district. Is, uh, we were fortunate enough to be part of the MSBA process. Is, uh, we were fortunate enough to be part of the MSBA process and which is the, uh, new school building project for the potential combination of heavily pushing. And the goal was to finish that eligibility phase on time. And I'll share the results of that as I go through. Next slide I did want to share, or the school committee will be familiar with this. This is, uh, a rubric where the school committee used to evaluate superintendent. So it's four standards, so when you see the presentation, you'll see that I'll refer to standard one, standard two, standard three, standard four. That's what these are. And also I had G1 and G2, G3, G4 for goals. So I reference those in the top right corner, so if you see those, that's what allows the school committee to go back and look these things over and reference, uh, the evidence to support the goals. So in, in highlighting, I'll just, standard one, instructional leadership, standard two, management and operation, standard three, family, community engagement, and standard four, professional culture. I'll dive into these in depth, a little bit more in the following slides. And here's a first example. So standard one, instructional leadership is broken down into six elements here, curriculum instruction, assessment, evaluation, data-informed decision-making, and student learning. And my little blurb on the left there is, you say, we capitalize the we. It's how we have promoted learning and growth of all students this year. Sharing the pillars of excellence and communication, collaboration is our consistent cornerstones in the work we do. And these next hour facts, we'll talk about, uh, these teaching learning practices have reinforced this standard. This was talked about at a prior school committee meeting and, uh, it's called tiered focus monitoring. And this is a, uh, evaluation, in-depth evaluation process by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education of our district, specifically focused on special education, English language learner in their program, and civil rights. This intense process is a self-assessment and submission of criterion, reference, evidence, and regular feedback from DESI, well, uh, which we received actually today. So we'll be highlighting some of that, um, response. But DESI comes in and does a deep dive, they collect a lot of information about us. They want to make sure, again, this is an overlap, we'll talk about equity, that every single student is an opportunity to grow and learn and excel in our district. And they give us feedback. And so here's an example of one of the criteria they may look at, so you have an idea and a flavor for it. Did the district and its schools meet the English language proficiency benchmarks at the department over the past three years? If not, what academic and non-academic supports and the other matter changes will affect the district. And he asked to meet their future language proficiency benchmarks. So we had a summary of verbal feedback, uh, with the leadership team a few months ago when this was wrapped up. And so we wanted to get a jumpstart on some of this, uh, feedback. So the next slide gives you an example of how we use this feedback and information from DESI to start improving our programs and student learning. So the goal here would be increase the number of, um, SEI-endorsed staff members. It's, it's only mandated by the state if you have a student, um, SEL in your class. We want to be the best in the world, we want all of our teachers to have this endorsement. So what our action was that, for the district was to offer this pathway for all of our teachers. And, uh, Assistant Superintendent's Royal Language Partnership did a great job, uh, you know, selling this to our teachers and, and making it available. And get some license, so we're proud to report on the bottom, you can see sixteen staff members are currently in this cohort voluntarily. There's something I'll, I'll mention later on, our, our collaboration in connection with Bridgewater State College, a new partnership that has really been, uh, it's given us significant opportunities that we may not otherwise have been able to do. So that endorsement has reduced costs, that's one of the benefits that the partnership allows us, that we can help pay for that for our teachers and, uh, not hit the budget so much because we have a partnership with BSU. So we'll continue to focus on that because, you know, as an administrator, I took that course, it's really helpful, it's really good for your, uh, literacy and learning for, for all your teaching. We talk about accountability, how we're going to measure success. And I do realize the goals this year, uh, can be more specific and they will be next year, but as you'll see through this slide deck hopefully, you'll see that there's a lot of systemic change that needs to be done this year, put us in a place. And this is one example, so this is the, what DESI provides us, it's public information, it's a report card. And some of the things where they define, this was also a presentation that, uh, Mr. Driscoll and I did during the school year. And we went with our principals right off the bat and started looking at them. So you see the color codes there, you know, we exceeded the target, blue, being met the target, and you go all the way down to no change, uh, which, which is, you know, something we can improve on. And then, you know, darker red is, is the worst. So you see the point system there? Still want to point out, if I can, you know, this is small three. But basically you get rated on achievement, growth, high school completion, progress towards, uh, English language learner proficiency, absenteeism, things like that. And so it's a real detailed dive in, looking at you versus yourself and then you versus state. And so we, uh, again, back to consistency. We did a workshop for our principals to look at this, but we now know that we have, and you can see this is nineteen data, because we didn't have this data from the lack of forecast from the COVID year. So this year we will have this data, um, from our results to look at, compare, and improve. And hold ourselves accountable for student improvement in areas that we lack and continue to hold high standards where we're doing well. So here's, uh, an example of using some assessment data to adjust practices. And I actually should just defer to Julie's presentation because she's one of the best to me. I learn from her all the time. Probably took this slide from her presentation, so, you know, all of our principals doing a really good job in department chairs, teachers, on, you know, collecting this data, and that's why I thought it was so important to do the school, state of the schools. Because people hear me in all of these meetings at district level, but when you hear the grass tax of how that is implemented in the school and when I go to the buildings and meet with the principals, the first thing we look at, we look at is, is some of the scores and we talk about, okay, how, how are we using this? And then I'll go in the classroom to see it in practice. And how are we adjusting in school committees, a great question tonight, what do we do if our kids not being a target? You know, how do we adapt? And I think one of the, one of the great things that we started this year that was consistent is the win program at elementary school. What I need, what every student needs, personalization to do that, to all hands on deck. I think that is really paying dividends, helping us overcome some of the obstacles that COVID has created for us. I should really, you'll be hearing some, a lot of firsts in the district. Uh, the Curriculum Acceleration Committee, the, of, uh, Mr. Driscoll and people on this, again, collaboration, unity, we talked about that. A lot of what we do is collaborative, not a lot of top-down, the vision, the ideas, yeah, that's, that's shared by me, the, the pillars. But here's how it transcends into getting everybody involved to get our curriculum aligned and transparent. A big goal moving forward into next year. So the Curriculum Acceleration Committee is principals and department chairs, uh, collaborating together. They volunteered for this group, so it's people that are passionate about these work. We have several of these committees going on simultaneously. And so the first thing we did was reached out to the community. We asked them, you know, some questions about, uh, student learning, how those children learn best. Asked the faculty and, and students, here's just one example of questions, students' projects are meaningful and result, and have actively participated. Well, the, uh, the blue is strongly agree. You can see that the faculty and students are pretty unified on this front, but the families at home, the parents at home thought a little bit differently. So we have, what this data sometimes does is it has us ask more questions. Okay, why are the families feeling like this? Is it a lack of communication on our part? Is it better, um, involvement and more involvement for them? So this information is helpful, we looked at that initially and that helped with our ESSA, ESSR requests as well. Uh, next thing we talked about is developing expectation guidance for the PBD model, participated in a refresher training with department chairs. So again, back to that consistency. The curriculum was there, it was just everywhere. I think our department chairs and Mr. Driscoll have brought, uh, this year's goal is to bring that all together under one umbrella, one place, start calibrating, start assessing it, start making sure it's aligned to the standards, we heard that referenced tonight. And that will continue to be our work here. All time for, I guess, the little break in the action here, so. I can't get, I can't stop thinking about the first line for pizza. As we have in central office, we have, uh, Mayera Fridays. I can see Dr. Duck's wheels going on, uh, how we can have a game on who can be first with Mayera. Do we think of that?
No, my question was that we ever run out of pizza? That would be a sermon for me, why do we have to worry about being first?
True, everyone likes to be first. So I'll, I'll continue, I guess. Oh, you can see in the back, yeah, yeah.
You're fine.
There's a little roll. So the next thing, uh, it's very important, um, and we're doing it tonight, this is part of my evaluation. Thank you. So the next thing that's very important is, uh, you know, evaluation accountability of, of everybody that works with kids, okay? And we had a, we had a model that was, was not good. So we purchased a new, uh, vector evaluation system, we trained all of our staff, including myself and the office, we were all trained using the same thing. Again, we had an evaluation committee, this is a first. This is volunteers collaborating together and then they come out and present it to us. Again, not top-down, so for example, with this new, uh, evaluation system and model to evaluate our, doing our job, the committee, the department chairs came to our central office meetings and faculty meetings and actually presented this. I didn't present it, Mr. Driscoll didn't present it, they did, they had ownership in it. As union members and teachers, uh, to do that, it was remarkable, they did a really good job. And so they, and they had pride in it. So we learned the new system, uh, this group worked together. Uh, the third bullet I want to reference worked as a subcommittee, the current interest-based bargaining process to recommend changes to language. So we had worked throughout COVID with, uh, our teachers' union and other unions to, you know, adjust on the fly and adjust learning and working conditions. And one thing we're really proud of is that the values, evaluation system never missed a beat. Because we were working hand in hand with, uh, the teachers and, and making sure that the process was fair, equitable, and had high standards. So we went from having Google Docs and baseline edge, which was, which again, which is not a good product last year, to a much improved project to store our information, to evaluate, to keep our timelines, and to, um, monitor and give feedback. Okay, the next standard is management operations. This includes environment, human resources, scheduling, management, law ethics and policies, and fiscal systems. I tried a little pro, different approach here with just some simple graphics on some achievements that, uh, and I may tie some of these into two years since we've been here as leadership team. First one, uh, we're really proud of, and some people we hear, school committee and the audience have, have given this feedback. There's been increased transparency in the budget process. We received very positive feedback from the select board this year on the transparency, transparency of our fiscal systems. Again, we want to do that with everything in our district and the bill. Uh, next thing we're working on is our curriculum, sharing part of that tonight. But we're real proud of that work, there should be nobody out there that isn't informed or aware of we spend the hard taxpayer's money. So that's, you know, again, we're always open to answer questions, but we've shared very detailed processes and, um, Michelle's, Dr. Duck's, we'll start over on that. Next one, again, establish universal free food day kindergarten savings of five hundred thousand to our families. Uh, in perpetuity, I hope, as long as I'm here, that's what I would wish for, is that there's no more kindergartens. Again, that's not equity, I should, if some people don't have the means, they not, a full day, they want a half day. Wasn't right, should be free. And same with athletic fees. This year for the FY twenty-three budget, we're very proud to report, there's no more athletic fees. Nine hundred bucks on top of your taxes to, to play, play sports. You know, I, I just think that's an imperative to getting kids, and it's also for families, especially in these times with, uh, you know, the financial things we're going through. So this was something we were able to incorporate, so if you combine the two together, you get seven hundred thousand savings for the community every year, every year. We budgeted that now, we own it, we're proud of that. And we'll look at other things like buses and, and other fees down the road. I, I want, want to really emphasize that because, you know, again, when I was interviewed for the job, this was one of the things that really bothered people was the amount of fees that sit you around. We got rid of the two biggest ones right off the bat, very proud of that. Want to thank the, everyone in the town meeting, especially the community for voting for that. Increased focus on curriculum, talk about that tonight. We looked at how much money we were spending on curriculum. Buy what you value, put your money where you value. And we had old textbooks and we had things that were outdated, listened to the teachers through the budgetary process. And this year we're spending up to four times what we've spent for years of this administration behind you. So I think we're very proud of that. And I also wanted to back it in saying that just because we spend more money doesn't mean it's going to work, right? It's going to be held accountable for that. But things like, like I just talked about, textbook, technology, professional learning for our staff. That we know pay dividends that we're lacking, um, and we just simply weren't spending. Again, a first ever in the district, it's a maintenance line item. And we're asking for a new school, the gates is fairly new, we want to stop asking for new schools. Uh, this room's a perfect example. For, uh, again, one of the great community, um, contributors here, responsible for helping to get this room, it's beautiful, innovative. We want to be able to do that, stop leaning on the town and taxpayers. So, uh, I want people to know that we started our first line item last year, a hundred twenty-five thousand. Doubled it, this year it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that we want to be proactive when broken window theory, when there's a little broken window, we fix it right now. We don't wait three years for the six broken windows and then ask for capital spending for a hundred thousand to be able to fix it. Okay, so we're taking accountability in our buildings. Again, a very prominent feature that we heard a lot of there from the community was we want to have buildings our kids are proud of. And we can do that. So we started that, and that harder money is going to parents, improvements on top of, next tab here is the capital. We doubled the capital investment in our two short years here. This was unanimously approved by the capital planning, select board, advisory, school committee, and town meeting, three years run. Uh, and this year it was doubled. Because I believe it's built on the trust of our transparency and how we spend money, what we spend money on, that we share what we spend money on. And when we ask for it, I think we're earning the trust of the townsfolk, select boards, this board, that we're spending it responsibly. And we're good stewards of the taxpayer money. So again, thank you, everyone, for doing that. And the last one is, um, just two budgets approved unanimously from all the boards, I think that's a good achievement. If you look at other towns, there's sometimes a lot of trouble with that, I'm very proud of the fact, um, of how this town works together to get to the bottom of things upfront before it's voted on. Couple more, um, again, this interest-based bargaining I mentioned, this talks about the collaboration. I know, uh, Dr. Kowski asked about how are we helping our teachers who, um, I consider them first responders. They were in here, remember, two years ago with doctors, um, and the nurses on the front lines, back in school right away. Very proud of that fact, and I understand the courage it took to do that. So what we've done this year was we're negotiating six contracts. We have to do so responsibly, this is a responsibility, we also have to do it so that we make sure that our, our teachers, um, have the tools they need to work with and are treated like professionals that they are. So this type of bargaining, uh, is very unique in which tables sit down and they come up with an interest, list of interests. Okay, so it might be the school day, length of the school day or length of a period. Those conversations are had as a group with a facilitator and they're ironed out. So you hear both sides of things, whereas traditional bargaining, it's okay, we want a longer day, you want a shorter day, let's do this. And it comes to a logjam sometimes. So we probably had about twelve meetings already, three or four hours apart, um, and it's moving very smoothly. So again, ways to go, and I want to thank any members of, of Mr. Gates on that, Brandini, for probably hundreds of hours you already put in. It's still to go, it's a long process, I'm a good five of the units. Increased diversity of our new hires by three times. I gotta be honest, it wasn't a lot of student, uh, minority people working in this district. So we're tripling it, wasn't extremely hard, but it was conscientious. Um, I just gave some administrative positions, I want to make sure that people know that we're hiring at all levels here. Uh, keeping in mind, we want to reflect the diversity we have in our student body. And I think we're well on our way doing that, uh, where we hire, how we recruit, of just being a welcoming place to work. One friend tells another reply here, so our application numbers have gone up. And again, something we're really proud of and something we want to continue to run. Next one is, uh, establish a pathway for new mentors to be trained as teacher leaders. Again, this is getting our teachers involved and it hopes up to train our new teachers and our new teacher, uh, orientation time. We have a process for that. Traditionally it was a closed pathway, basically same people did it, don't really know how it could become a, a teacher mentor, the teacher, the new teachers. So, um, credit to Mr. Driscoll in opening that pathway up. and the teacher mentors coming up with that great idea. And now it's open to any teacher that wants to be a leader, that wants to contribute back to the new teachers. This, this blue box in the right corner is very interesting. I'll bring this up at the end. It's the only time I'll mention COVID in this whole presentation. I could have spent this whole slide deck on COVID tonight. My goal was to show you what's happening in that district, what achievements are being accomplished in spite of COVID, in the face of COVID. So we had a medical advisory council, so I had, I wanted to put that there because these are people that were, are local citizens. We are local doctors that were volunteering for that. We have school nurse leaders. And those people had to make a lot of courageous, tough decisions in a line of fire. And so that was important. It's the only time I would mention. Not that it didn't happen. But I'm celebrating all the stuff we did while it was a little pandemic. Right, so I really want to establish that. Next one is the, uh, this word brought this up in our other principles already. This social emotional learning is extremely important, especially through the pandemic, for our kids, for our adults, for our community. So, um, started a new district team and school building teams. Used to be kind of a one-man show in the surrounding area and a group of volunteer, uh, groups from schools would do it. Now it's very organized, highly organized, but it's consistent. Students took the peer assessment. Each school broke it down. District level team helped coordinate. And then faculty time was spent on looking in that, coming up with action steps at each school because they were a little different with their data. Sense of belonging, for example. How do our kids feel about that? And what are we going to do about that? Coming up with some action steps to do that. And then, um, guidance, our, our great guidance department went to all of our, our staffs. Had, uh, what's called signs of suicide training. Uh, heavy stuff, but important. You know, really important. So we want families to know that we're being trained on this stuff all the time. To make sure we're looking out for your children and that we're protecting them. So this is a training that we went through that was very powerful and productive. I wanted to mention that. And here's the goal of completing the MSBA. Again, a lot of people involved in this. A lot of spearheads from Dr. Dutch's office. We were months ahead of schedule. Town meeting vote on the funding for the feasibility study for a million dollars. And schematic to design phase. So we're proud of the facts of moving into that phase right now. A question presented on that. Presenting again in May, giving folks a constant update on where we are with the process. Yeah, try to flicker here. So again, back to the safety, uh, security of our students and our, our school family here. We didn't have a district crisis team. We had building-based teams. So, you know, what happens if the district has an emergency? Who do we, who gets to the table and, you know, figures it out? Who's, who's there? So we've got, and it should be a collaborative membership of community groups, police, fire, uh, school representation. So we, um, I want to thank Dr. McByer and Ms. Rundle for sharing that, putting that together. We have our community liaisons that contribute to that, volunteer the time and meet. And they're starting to put together, uh, step by step, crisis responses to when things inevitably may happen. How we handle that. So we're prepared. So we'll keep you posted on that. We'll eventually have that report out. But again, it's something we're proud of, that we're, uh, we found lacking and that we implemented and have in place. We do have it in place, but we'll continue to evolve as we develop that group. Third standard is family community engagement. Which involves our community, sharing responsibility, communication. So something new this year is seaside chat. Had two. The first one was focused on the MSBA project. And that was the fall one. We had two sessions so folks could make it. We had an afternoon session, evening section, session at 6:30. Those first two ones were each 90 minutes. My philosophy has always been I'll stay till the last question's asked and answered. And so I give, I want to thank all the folks that were able to make it. I know you all can't make it. It will evolve into a hybrid model like this, the thing we're doing here tonight. But it was just good to, the timing was good for both those meetings. And the second one was just more of an open forum for me to listen. Timing was right. Social distancing and masks and so on, be able to get together. Each of those meetings were approximately two and a half hours. And there was great conversations. And I want to give people credit because it goes back to that thing I talked about, about modeling. And all the questions and concerns were focused on me. Nobody got into it with each other. It was respectful. I took a lot of good notes. I got a lot of good information. We got a lot of work to do. But it was really helpful. Really profound for me as superintendent. People took the time to come out and share that. It's not always easy to, I know not everybody can make it. We'll continue to do that as I try to sneak one more in this year, but the more next year. Also, just throwing it out there, I am, I love one-on-one meetings. I love people. I'd never turn a meeting down. So if you want to come in and talk to me about anything, set it up and we'll do that. So I probably had a hundred meetings with, yeah, my members, students and staff this year, uh, one-on-one. Part of my job. That's that. And just so everyone knows, the information taken from that, sharing with school committee, we collected it. It's all part of that, our goals for next year incorporating that. Something I'll get to in a minute, thought exchange, just collecting all this input and then turning it back out into, um, a tab. So next piece here is, I mentioned this earlier, our connection with Bridgewater State University. Plenty of handful of schools that have this partnership. Maybe because Mr. Crystal and I teach there. Right now, we've got connections. My daughter graduated there. So we've got a little pull there. So they, great to work with us. And just some examples of, um, things that we may not be able to do that they can, uh, is having, uh, guest speakers on a variety of topics. Here's one, um, here that's very popular. And getting the data back for this, we were averaging about five or six people for each of these. So, um, hopefully we can get more, but just wanted to give you the reality that this is shared with all of our families. And just a shout out to everybody out there that these are available to our community to take advantage if you can. They're very helpful and powerful. So that's one, one example of the many things that we've done with the BSU family. So I thought this was very important to talk about equity in our students with disabilities. And this is CPAC, is our special education parent advisory council. And that, uh, you know, huge credit out here to Dr. Bobert, her, her work on this. She was a little disheartened when there wasn't a lot of people in that group. You know, we came in during a pandemic too and things like that. But, um, you know, and not acceptable. We wanted that to be a very important group. We wanted to hear from those parents. Everybody that wanted to be part of that team. So went from one, one parent, one to eight people showing up to three board members and thirty, twenty-three to thirty people showing up at meetings. So great job with that. Uh, that's a great sounding board for us. Great way to get information on our special education, uh, programming that we can do better. We're doing well. So some of the things you can see here that they've done as a group, this involves our community members and parents, is, uh, updated the website. Working together, administer bylaws now, post on the website. Working on the media publicity and communication piece, which is important, as we know. Instagram account and working on an email. So I know that's going to be an ongoing program, but again, from kind of nothing to, uh, shining stars. I want to thank Dr. Bobert and the parents that have committed to that process. Next slide I wanted to share is there, it's been a lot of talk about, how many kids are here and where are kids going? And, you know, that really hits home with me. I went to BC High as a freshman. I moved to Plymouth and went to, moved on to public school. So I had that experience with St. Mary's in Boston. Had a great experience there. So I understand the private school experience is for some people and some kids, some parents, it's great. But I'm a public school teacher, educator now, uh, having that experience. And I just wanted to kind of share, find out, you know, why are people choosing? Where are people going? So this is from our, our own information, uh, sharing with you here tonight. Even though the analysis demonstrates, other than homeschooling due to COVID, we have seen no dramatic change in withdrawals. Because marching is urgent. We don't want to lose ones too. We've set up something this year where we're doing exit interviews. Anybody that leaves district, student and the families. Council team is doing that. Started at mid-year, so not a lot of transitioning going on at that time. So it's been a little slow. That'll be full force for the end of the year and the beginning of next year. So I'll be able to share data next year on not only the numbers of students that are coming and going places, but the why. Don't have that yet. But you, you can see in dates from eighteen, nineteen, top reason for those three years, um, people moved. You see the private school number in eighteen, nineteen was fifty-four. It jumped five to fifty-nine this year. Year before was fifty-one, so that's been inconsistent in the fifties. The vocation, uh, vocational school, uh, has actually decreased at this point right now. Look at the bottom chart from sixteen, uh, eighteen, nineteen to ten now. And then what we've seen, uh, our biggest spike is the homeschooling. What we receive in eighteen, nineteen, there was two students pre-COVID. Pandemic time, pretty much everybody was home, so that wasn't a big number. We jumped up during the hybrid year last year to twenty-nine. And we had six new ones this year, so we're up, um, almost thirty-eight students now. We actually had a handful come back recently. So we'll update this data. Just wanted to kind of share that, make sure that the public is aware of that, that we're keeping track of that and that we're not satisfied. And that we'll have more information next year. And we encourage folks that do decide to leave to, you know, share us the why because that's important for us to improve. This is some, uh, almost there. Personalization of belonging, uh, love inclusion and trust model. You know, we wanted to come to a model that wouldn't be controversial, you know? Including people, loving each other, trusting people. Can we all agree to that? That's where we wanted to start from. That's the core of things. And starting with the, we all want what's best for our children. Right, so we can all be there. I think we start that with our love, inclusion, trust model and then go and build that out. I think with them, uh, again, with Mr. Adams and his team, all our teachers. I think that students getting involved is, kicked off, it's such a public schools pledge in each building and kids working on this is our house. A celebration that we have a tradition where kids are involved, families are involved. What a great way to start the year that like, you know, it's nerve-wracking for kids to come to school. Sometimes I'm seeing for the adults, right? It's tough. School's tough sometimes. So we want this to be a learning, caring place, kicking things off. This is our house. Celebration of school and learning, uh, is important. So that is an example. And then, um, Mr. Adams has provided voluntary short stops, we call them, or professional development for teachers, how to have difficult conversations. Something comes up in class or colleagues. And just spending time together. It's really been good to do that. Also join faculty meetings to answer their questions and navigate through, uh, through the school year. Kind of like our other, other teams, we have love and inclusion trust teams that gets teachers to be part of in each building. We even have a parent advisory group, uh, similar to this special education parent advisory group that any parents welcome to join. Community freedom team that's evolving as we speak. Chair focused marching, which I share with you about our special education, English language learners, um, and how we're navigating that. The CPAC focus and expansion, I talked about that. And the accountability training, which we may have pointed out, but looking at students economically disadvantaged. E L students and things like that. So looking at all our different, uh, groups of children to make sure that we're deep diving into the data to make sure that every student is being looked over and, and, um, attracted. Next is, uh, technology. So technology's, safety is important, obviously in a district with a lot of information, student records, things like that. So what we did is we hooked up with a, um, technology group that did a, an outside agency that did a, uh, in-depth safety and security audit of our own technology system. Gives a real good feedback on our areas of weakness, of places that, um, need to be fixed. And they prioritize for us. And here's some great examples. Uh, we had to beef up our password. People pretty much drive them by, you could like log on to the wifi and stuff. So we didn't know that. We, we found out and we strengthened that. Two-factor authent, authentication there, you know, we'll log into your email. Like, well, it gets your, your phone code. So, uh, teachers, educators, administrators, you know? So all the information you're sending back and forth is protected. So I think that's a really good, uh, use of our time. And a shout out to, uh, Mr. Long and our tech department for all the work they've done with that. And then the one-to-one. Again, it really happens in districts. It's a long process. And we're already ready to implement that. I know Mr. Long has shared that, um, our process for that already. Again, that role is coming. We'll continue throughout the next couple of years. And we've established a website development team. You may be surprised to know this, but the superintendent's assistant is in charge of the website for three years. Right, Mr. Peters. He's good at technology. That's a yeoman's responsibility. So right away, we said, we need a team. So again, shout out to our tech team. It's Peters, it's Matthews, starting with your hair, part of that team. And we're working on, um, a new communication system and a new website. Goal being rolled out for, um, September first. Right, so you'll see that. We are working on that. We are aware that we can, there's been a lot of great improvements, but it's been a two-person shortage. And, uh, it's Matthews and it's Peters doing that work. Now we've got a team that's working on it with, uh, professionals to develop that. And to move, quite honestly, the, the website designer we had wasn't user-friendly, uh, great communication system. So we're looking at a new system that's more user-friendly. It's easier to access for families. And so work in progress, but we'll be rolling that up pretty soon. Have a more improved website for the new school. And lastly, uh, standard four, high standards, cultural proficiency, communication, shared vision, and managing conflict. All right, so commitment to high standards. I know we always go to AP, but it's, it's pretty impressive what's happened in a short period of time, I think. Working with Mass Insights, uh, just giving our kids and our teachers the tools they needed to, uh, for example, take practice tests. Teachers to be trained. And things like that that weren't happening. So our goals this year and something we focused on was increased participation and more kids involved in AP that want to be there, that want to push themselves to be there. It's not for everybody, uh, but our numbers did go up pretty good. increased performance. So not only do we want you to be in the AP, we want you to take the AP test. I think that's an expectation. And we want you to do well, pass a score on the AP as a three, but at one to five. Different schools have different philosophies. Our philosophy is we want to encourage all students to take that test because that's a college-level assessment. Take that course, that college-level course, and you should be taking the assessment to get used to that. And increased college success, which translates into our, in our SAT data, how we improve our students that are taking the SAT. And so we talk about here that we've, uh, with a grant, And so we talk about here that we've, with a grant, goes to the high school. They use that money to get two summer courses. That will go into next year as well. That was projected in high school program studies. And we talked about the teachers in trade. I mentioned this already, this is just a snapshot of that I am completing a program. Keep in mind, we still have nine weeks of school left. Presenting all the stuff we accomplished now, we still have nine weeks to finish up a lot of things. And it never stops, it'll go through the summer and it'll go through next year. Again, just a list of some things, because I think to me, communication is really the most important thing. I'll put ours, our district up at least above any other. And if there's other ideas that we aren't using, this means a great example. The districts are doing hybrid school meetings. State of the district, and that's not me, this is school meeting. And Seth, of course, and his team, you guys agree. The first one's going pretty good, right? All right, state of the district and schools. Again, new this year, I hope you're enjoying that, we had a sample tonight. I think it's really important to kind of give folks an update on what's happening in the schools, to give examples. Julie mentioned it tonight, those slides were five slides on purpose. They all were the same, back to that consistency. All those presentations, they had the same template that I used. So we're all held to the same, okay, you gotta get it in five slides, so that they won't trip along as long as I, right? Next one's Thursday Thoughts. Again, we're getting feedback, we moved to a weekly, the bi-weekly, because that's the feedback we're getting. We're looking at how many hits we were getting on it, who was reading it, how often they were looking at it, what we were including it. We hope you enjoy that. And again, that's a work in progress and as we get feedback on it. But we're averaging over a thousand views each, I think that's pretty good. Superintendent, do a weekly cable show, if you haven't seen it, you can check it out. There's every week on the local cable, whatever network is. Just a short tidbit of the upcoming events, I do town administrators, it's a lot of fun. And there's no makeup involved, ready to go in there, it's early. Give me a little break on that, but it's a lot of fun and I appreciate work on the town of that and that they allow me to do that. I hope you can watch it. School committee presentations, just, you know, last year, part of the feedback that I wanted, that I needed to put in on was curriculum stuff. And certainly that was a focus this year. I remember it, the superintendent who knows the stuff and bones. But you might have noticed in every school committee meeting, except for tonight, because I know I was going to be long. So I gave her a break, she helped me with this. So I said, night off. But if you noticed, we've had her present every single meeting on the weekly. Going right into the fire, so I want to thank her for that. So that was focused and on purpose and continue to do that for the remainder of the year and see what we do going on. And just some other things that people need to know, I mentioned tonight. I meet with all the principals regularly, we have a focus meeting on goals, what their expectations are, accountability, classroom visits, something like in the classroom. Next meeting we're all doing for consistency is, Mr. Principal and I are going to be, each principal will talk about their schedules. Back to consistency, it's that time of year where we're scheduling. So for example, the elementaries, are we consistently scheduled? What's the value system we place on schedule? Are we doing it in the middle, are we at high school, are we maximizing the use of our time? Are we making time for professional development during the school day? Are kids getting the most time on learning, things like that. And then I mentioned the email, phone meetings. When I talk to our leadership team, I talk about email being the lowest level. I think even below that is Facebook, stay off Facebook is my recommendation. It's a joke, I'm not on it. It makes me act, you know? So they've got an email, I tell them, no, it's on the issue, don't go on Facebook. Email is the lowest level, okay, that's small time communication. Phone call is the next best level, talk to somebody. The next better level is to meet with somebody. And if it's soon, if that's a comfortable level, do that. If it's in person, that's great too, right? So all of our leaders are doing that. Hope you've seen that. And it takes a lot of time, but it pays dividends. And I think people are nicer than each other, they're more civil, they're respectful. And I hope we can all move towards that, it's nice and good start for that, to have civil discourse, have positive discourse. Keep that goal in mind, don't lose the eye of the prize is the kids. Our kids, not your kids, my, our kids. My personal philosophy in education is treat every child like they were my own. I don't know everybody, they have children, what do I mean by that? Well, when I make a decision, how would I want my own child impacted? I have two, they're adults now. They were fortunate to have great teachers, great leaders. So when we make decisions, do I hold, do I have high accountability for my kids, right? Are they accountable, is their discipline? Are they supported, are they loved? That's a word you don't hear in education a lot. We are trying to get there, we need everybody's help to get there. Where you send in the trust of your kids to the situ public schools, they will be loved, they will be treated with respect, they will be pushed, they will be challenged. So I think we've got a team, we certainly have the teachers and support staff to do it. So that's something that we're going to continue to do. Just some other things to some groups that are involved with superintendents. And then the newest thing, and I want to, again, give a big shout out to our community. This thing is working, a thought exchange is open until Friday, another little push there if you haven't been on it. I hope you're having fun with it, with the ratings and all that. There's been, this is the biggest turnout we've ever gotten in a survey. I don't even like calling it a survey, because it's supposed to be an exchange. If you haven't heard it, you're listening to this, please reach out to the central office if you're a principal and we'll get you the link. We're already looking at the feedback, there's already trends developing, because students are going to take it. Families and staff, and we're looking at intersections and we look forward to sharing that out with the community on what we're finding. And that's just one, and then we'll get more specific. The first one's really general, but we're getting a lot of good feedback, so I want to include that, because I think it's very important that we've moved to that kind of a, again, one more thing about listening to our community and then kind of being transparent about, right? It's good, bad and the ugly. This is what we're hearing, that we want to, you know, steep, we want to stop, we want some innovative ideas that our school committee gave us. So we're excited to share that with you. And again, we're not afraid to ask the questions of what can we do better? Finally, just looking ahead to some, next year, we've got a huge piece of the MSBA's, these buildings are in sign phase, which is actually working with an operation, OP and well, our project manager, we're working on, we're hiring that person who advocates for the school. And then we'll be working with this building subcommittee and start getting groups together and all that really busy work moving through the summer into next year. Again, Dr. Dush will share that in the May ninth meeting on the next steps for our community. Equity audit, this goes hand in hand with strategic plan, okay? Again, a lot of talk about equity, what is it, where are the numbers? But we need to do an equity audit to find out, give us, give our data, look at and see all of our children, look at them all. Look at how they are being treated, how's our discipline being treated, how's our educational experience being treated? Our families being treated, everybody. So this is the best way to do it, where it's transparent, get the information, share with everybody, let me do everything else. And we say, okay, this is what's great, this is what isn't so great, this is what we need to do for this stuff. We're going to be looking to do that, certainly run that by the school committee first. Our strategic plan, that was when the former administration runs out of inclusion this year, excuse me, next year. So it's actually good timing. A strategic plan, if you're not familiar, it's a wonderful experience to involve entire community, students, staff, families, school boards, everybody into developing what we want to be. That question, academic excellence. This is a great opportunity for everyone to participate in defining our vision for our district. So that's an exciting thing coming next year. Less exciting for you all is my third year of the NSAP. New elementary reading program, first of its kind in situ again, excited about that. We're excited, we're piloting that now, we'll be sharing what reading program we go with, what we'll be following that and how it impacts our kids and their learning. Echo, you saw our new addition to the team, we're reviewing and revising that program as we speak. Make it more interconnected with the situ community, it's a little isolated right now, we can do a better job of it. We've got the right people there to do it. So we're excited about that, we're excited about that, I already talked a lot about it. Last slide. I'm excited to share these things that went over, and I said this once again, I had one little box, one little slide about the pandemic. Huge credit to our teachers, relentless work ethic, our administrators, our paraprofessionals, our custodians, bus drivers, administrators and community students, of course, for getting all of this done. And we've got ninety weeks left, we're getting cast, we head to the metal sill. And I also wanted to give a shout out to the school committee. Sarah Lee, the courageous, tough job you have, it's voluntary, I'm getting paid, you're not. Whoever sits in these seats, we have much respect for. So I wanted to personally thank you for all the hard work you do. I don't hear enough people maybe, and I want to tell you personally in public that in my two years, you pushed me, challenged me, loved me to account and supported. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Burkett, you helped record. So the next step in terms of that president, the superintendent is the only member of our staff that gets to be evaluated in public. The school committee will, has received a seven-page evaluation sheet that the superintendent has filled out. Over the next week, I've asked, the school committee received that document last week, I've asked them to put their individual evaluations together by next Monday. I'll put together a few little review and we'll share that in public in our meeting on May ninth. If there are any questions or comments, thank you Superintendent Burkett.
I have your wrist if I didn't comment. I think that the school committee has been through a lot the last couple of years. And one of the biggest decisions we needed to make was who to hire as a superintendent. That's always, I think, the number one priority as a school committee. And we, I think, opened up the application period around January of twenty twenty. And we, I think, brought it down to the finalists, probably the onset of the pandemic, because since everything was remote. So I think that the district or the school committee made the perfect decision hiring Superintendent Burkett. I want to thank him for his effort in navigating, he did, he navigated us through the pandemic, we have to mention it. It took us a lot of our time, the last two years. It impacted all of us in different ways. But I think that the district is, and the community is lucky to have someone like Superintendent Burkett. And I think that he was able to, I don't know how long his presentation was, forty-five minutes or an hour, to review all the things that we have accomplished. It's quite an achievement. So I just wanted to thank him for his service and his efforts. We are ultimately responsible for the hiring of superintendent, so we're kind of held accountable to that respect that he did. He has proven the last two years that we made the right decision, so I just wanted to state that. And thank you very much. I want to say again, I'll take a little bit of Chairman Long's under, I think this was mainly his idea, but for those that have come to these evaluations over the past ten years or twenty years, historically, we do it in August. Didn't really make any sense, because we have our elections that are in May. So we have a new school committee member theoretically that would have joined us in May, but yet we had, they had to review, they can't review the superintendent. So it was kind of an awkward situation. And I'll just give credit to Mike, Chairman Long for, and I think Superintendent Burkett for kind of changing that calendar so such that this process can be completed prior to the next election of potentially a new school committee member or whatever, this year or next year or in the future. I think it goes a long way and I think that makes a lot more sense, but that is a significant change. Again, the summer school committee meetings generally, I think, were used just because there wasn't that much else to do, maybe. So we would generally do the superintendent evaluations, that's why we're beginning a year. And then the next, the next meeting, I guess, is when, as Chairman Long said, all the comments will be, May ninth. It would be reviewed and we're required to school committee to provide evaluation on a new basis to, that's it. So thank you again Superintendent Burkett and to the school committee, in my opinion, making great decisions.
I want to just hundred percent agree with Peter's comments of Superintendent Burkett, how hard work he's been doing to just hire. And the presentation, I think, was a good example of all the different things, so many of the, what goes on behind the scenes and what has to get done to have such a great district. So I want to thank that.
Yeah, I wasn't on the school committee when you were hired, but I do remember attending your interviews on Zoom. And so I think the thanks also goes to the parents and families and caregivers who attended all of those interviews and helped the school committee to make that decision by giving feedback. So I also appreciate the community's efforts to participate. I'll also say, Bill, because you bring up trust and respect and communication often, as a new school committee member, I think I've appreciated most that you're willing to take all of the questions that I throw at you. Not just in public, but in our private one-on-ones. And I'll say, because as a parent, I experienced previous superintendents who, quite frankly, I didn't want to ask them any questions because they weren't interested in engaging in conversation. So I think not only do you sort of inject that into the culture of schools, you live that and model that by the conversations that we're able to have, because I have nothing but respect for you and I think it's because you trust each other enough to disagree. And so I just wanted to say I'm grateful. And speaking of questions, Chairman Long, are we allowed to ask questions about the presentation tonight? Or are we holding them?
No.
No? So I do have a couple of questions.
That would be disqualified.
That's okay. So the first one goes back to way back in the beginning of your presentation. You mentioned the increase in the cost of curriculum, which I agree, we value that tremendously. And so I'm wondering, what's the thought process around measuring the return on investment on the increase in costs? I'm just curious how you're thinking about that, sort of tracking of that.
Yeah, it's a good point. One thing I didn't mention was our use of S R money to complement that. And the reading programs are a perfect example, over three hundred thousand dollars. So if we use S R money for that, if we use that for our, in our budget, we can do athletics, two hundred thousand dollars creative thought. So that, the obvious question here is, how does that impact our student reading levels and our devil scores, our stars, and all the things that Ms. Ward and our other elementary principals have talked about? We want to be expected with this, we don't look at it as, it's not a program, it's people. So we're getting a program, teachers are working really hard and excited about it, there's your coordinator, Megan's doing a great job with it. But those scores that, you know, and I like what Julie said about, we're not looking at one measure, we're looking at multiple. We need to see those all, we shouldn't see a little bump. Next year, of course, I can go anyways, with just the focus we're doing this. That's one example of big tip, big, you know, we're spending three hundred thousand dollars on this thing. Our children's exposure to reading and their ability to read at a higher level, quicker, faster, better. Our teachers to be able to have the materials and training to do so should do that trajectory up, in those scores as well as our investment.
The other question, I know, and I know this is new, Bill, but I wanted to ask anyway. You had mentioned that you're starting to analyze or at least look at the data from the thought exchange. I was wondering if you could talk about who's doing that review, how you're doing that review, what that, I'm just curious about that process.
Yeah, we actually hired an outside group.
So they're doing, they're doing it?
They're doing it, we have access, like the central office.
Okay.
It's crystallized, we're looking at it. But the cool thing is, this is how we shared to the public, was that we don't know who's, it's completely anonymous.
Yeah.
So what they'll do is they'll churn all that information out, break it down into any kind of information you want, presentations, charts, by parents, by kids, cross-section. Though I know that's right up your alley, so I think, you know, when we talk further, I'll have them helping me this time with that. So I think that's important. So I think what, where they said it was, they showed us some examples, we were very impressed with what we learned with that. Is we were struggling with, and I know you and I had conversations last year with many parents, you know, we're not survey makers. Like, there's no, it's really, it's really science to do, like, surveys. We saw the thought exchange, we saw how, I talked to some superintendents that did it, the involvement, community involvement in these, because of the interest, the rating and all this. And you get to that rational majority in the middle of what's important to the districts. So we won't be doing that, we're looking at it for our own kind of, we'd like to get a jump on it. At the end of the two weeks, they'll churn it all out, share that with us, so we'll have some pretty cool graphics and things, probably have so many who will choose. We'll make a decision to share those with, you know, anybody who wants one, we'll do a presentation.
Just out of curiosity, and maybe this is on their website, and so just tell me to go there. Are they sharing documentation with you on sort of their process for analyzing the data, sort of like behind the scenes?
It's on their website.
It is on the website, okay.
Right now, if you're participating in the thought exchange, you can actually see the results and the power selection of the students.
Right?
Right as you're just, to see it.
Hi, thank you again Superintendent Burkett, in two weeks. Hopefully, by your mother. I'm being good? We did a time and break. Fine, so next on the agenda, we have the Director of Business and Finance report, writing an update on the capital projects.
Well, I'll be presenting on all of the capital projects that we have going right now. And go to the next slide. Arrow.
There's.
Here at the very end. Have it if you want.
No, it's fine, I.
Looking on the arrow to go on.
Can you take control of this?
Okay, so we've got some combined projects, we've got those projects that were approved for this year. F Y twenty-two, they include technology, the locker room, one of the locker rooms at the high school, the Wampatump parking lot stairs at Jenkin School, which was an F Y sixteen town meeting approved project that hasn't been done yet. The flooring at the high school, phase two. Um, the flooring at the high school, phase two, and the portico. And the total for those projects is one point six million dollars. And then for next year, for FY twenty-three, beginning July first, again, technology, uh, phase three of the flooring at the high school, uh, the roof at Situate High School, and then rigging for the Center for Performing Arts. If you move to the next slide, I'll go into more detail on each of these projects. So technology, if you could look at FY twenty-two. So this year, we've already made these purchases, uh, we had a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we purchased sixty-five thousand dollars worth of Chromebooks, which bought us two hundred fifty Chromebooks. And then interactive displays like the one that you, that we're using here for the classroom. So those were FY twenty-two purchases that have already been made. FY twenty-three, we are looking to replace laptops, uh, mostly for teachers that are at least five years old, in most cases, they're six years old. We're also looking to address some network controller, um, controllers that are being phased out uh because of age as well as uh in addition to the network controllers, looking at more access points for Wi-Fi. With uh going one-to-one throughout all schools, uh, there'll be a greater, greater need for reliable Wi-Fi system. And then the phone system at Wampatuck is a traditional analog system. Um, many of the phones don't work, they don't call out of the building. And in many cases, they can't call between classrooms or even to the office. So it becomes a safety issue. Um, so we'll be moving that to a voice-over-I P system similar to what's at the high school and the middle school. So that it's uh more current, more reliable, teachers can call out to parents from their classroom during prep period or at the end of the day, not have to try and call their cell phone uh or home landline if they still have it. Uh, high school locker rooms, that was an FY twenty-two project. We put it out to bid last year and received no bids. Um, the town allocated seven hundred and ten thousand dollars for that project. So if you go to the next, I'm happy to say, the architectural plans have been completed. We put this out to bid online through Bid Docs, which kind of streamlines the process. We received six bids, uh, none of them were under the seven hundred and ten thousand dollars unfortunately, but one was close. Um, the reference check is now complete, finished that today. I got calls back from all three uh references and they were good for the low bidder. Uh, the low bid, you can see, was seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. So we are hoping this week to award the bid uh to that, to that company, um, which I can't share until I reach out to them. Um, they will begin work on June twenty-second, high school and seniors, or excuse me, um, all students are in finals and and won't be in the gyms, uh, and certainly won't be using the locker room. And the target deadline is August thirty-first before students come back, and that should be twenty twenty-two, sorry. Um, so just uh to answer Pete's question before he asked it, uh, the difference in, as far as the shortfall between the seven-ten and the seven-eighty-three. Um, at town meeting this year, there was an appropriation of ninety thousand dollars for capital projects, some surplus funds from the previous year, savings they had had. So we're going to use, and that has to be used or at least encumbered by June thirtieth. So we'll be using those funds to pay for all of the difference and there'll be a short amount additional amount that we left to utilize before June thirtieth. So that's, that's how we're making up that shortfall. Okay? Portico, we've budgeted a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, again, we put that out to bid last year, received one bid of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, we were very specific in last year's bid regarding the materials we wanted to use, which I think is part of the reason uh that the cost is what it was. So the engineering is complete, uh, so we are finalizing the bid specifications. And I posted again on Bid Docs uh to increase the number of uh companies that put in proposals uh with an expectation that they'll be able to do that this summer. It's not really a long job. So I'm pretty confident we'll be able to get it done within the dollars that we have there. Again, uh, they're removing and replacing the entry portico and the sidewalk, both under the portico going into the school and in front of the school where the drop-off area is. Just, just as a point of reference, because I know that, especially if you have kids at Wampatuck, a lot of times the buses hit that portico because it overhangs the curb. So it's been designed to be a little further back so that that will be an issue later. Okay? Wampatuck parking lot, uh, three hundred and three thousand dollars was allocated. We, again, that was a, a project that was um for this year. We did not put it out to bid, uh, because it will take all of a summer to do it. Putting it out to bid uh last year would have been too narrow a window, uh, since we couldn't do that until July one. So those specifications are being finalized, um, and it's replacing all of the asphalt around the entire school at Wampatuck, sidewalks, parking lots, um, trying to address the drainage issues. Um, and even looking as alternatives, um, depending on the price we get, if we can address the drainage in the fields behind, if you've ever looked at the swing set and then the, the playground. Um, if there's any, any significant rain, you know, an inch or more, um, it floods. It's underwater for a long period of time. So we need to look at, what's that?
So the kids.
Yeah, maybe. Um, so that's, that's the goal with that, that project. High school flooring, um, phase two is the second floor of the high school, and that's an FY twenty-two project. So we'll put that out to bid this summer. Again, not, not a complicated bid. Uh, we know what the product is that we want, we're looking at the same materials that we've used uh elsewhere in the building. Um, and it's one, one vendor, there's no subcontractor, so it's, it's pretty straightforward. And then phase three is an FY twenty-three project for three hundred thousand dollars. That's the first floor of the school. Uh, and we plan to complete that next summer. So we'll, we'll put that out to bid probably in, in April or May of next year. Anticipation you get to work in general summer. Jenkins Skiff Stairs, if you've ever been over there, um, there's a set of stairs that goes up um alongside the building. Um, they're, they're timbers. One of the timbers has failed and, and the others are on the verge of failing. The railings are um not secure and not safe in, in my opinion and in the opinion of most. Uh, the town had um allocated fifty thousand dollars to that project. We put it out uh to get quotes, uh, because of the price, didn't need to get a bid, so we put out for quotes and we received a quote for forty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, it's our contract's been awarded, that work will begin after the last day of school and uh it shouldn't take long. It will be concrete, uh, not, not replacing with timbers, we're replacing with concrete stairs, poured concrete. Centure High School roof, um, we're going to replace the remaining old section. So when each school was built, the portion that's abutting, uh, gates was redone. Um, so I, I don't know if you can zoom in on that at all. Counterintuitive, yeah. So any, anything that is black on those roofs is what we're looking to replace. Um, so it's, it's uh, I forget the square footage, but it's, it's pretty significant. Um, the town has voted, uh, one million, forty-five thousand dollars based on an estimate um that we have, um, just based on square footage pricing. We did submit statement of entrance, interest to the MSBA to participate in the accelerated repair program. So a portion of that would be reimbursed. Um, just so that you're aware also, I, I've met, or I've met with one, and I'll be meeting with a second uh contractor specifically related to solar roofing, solar panels on the roof. Um, the, the challenge is, one, one wants us to buy the power, um, net, net metering credits, which I don't think we can do because of the town, the town has already committed to all of the power that they utilize now, even though we still pay electric bill. Uh, the second contractor that I'm, I'm talking to would like to put solar panels on our, all of our roofs and lease the space. Uh, what I'd like to try to negotiate is that they would lease that space um in advance rather than moving forward and pitch for them instead. So that's, that's kind of the conversations that we'll be having. Um, I don't know what their return on investment is, they're then going to sell that power to somebody else. Uh, so we've got to figure out what's their return on investment and is it worth a million dollars over twenty years to them, so. We'll see if we can do that. So the Center for Performing Arts, um, we have a safety evaluation done annually. Uh, this year, there was determined that there's twenty-six thousand dollars in maintenance items that need to be done. Historically, uh, the, the goal was that maintenance of the Performing Arts Center would happen through usage fees. Because of COVID, there hasn't been much usage, so they haven't generated much revenue. So we went to town, to the town and approached town meeting for the twenty-six thousand dollars and we agreed to that understanding rationale. So we want to make sure that this is maintained. Again, it's an asset that you have, it should be a spotlight, performing arts on South Shore. They play at secondary school level, uh, so we want to make sure that we continue to maintain it so that it stays up. Laid it cap. So we have twenty buses. Of those twenty buses, lease expires this year on nineteen of them. Um, I had true concern that given supplies chain issues, that I would not be able to find nineteen buses by July first since I started looking in February. I thought six months would be, five to six months would be sufficient. Um, everybody that I went to said ten months. Uh, we found DATCO, we've purchased through before, had nineteen buses on their property, um, twenty-twenty-three buses, uh, so I agreed to lease them, five years. It's actually three hundred and four thousand dollars. We saved two thousand dollars a year, uh, what they originally mentioned. Again, they're five-year leases, historically, we've done three years. Um, not a lot of miles put on the bus in three years, uh, not a lot of wear and tear. So it, it seems like, you know, the cost is spread out over a longer period of time, you're going to get better, better return on that investment over five years, uh, even with repairs, maintenance that you'll have to do, filters, oil changes, tires, brakes, those sorts of things will start to happen after year three. Um, but the cost, because it's spread out, out over five years, is still less than those expenses. So it seems a better way to go. Uh, it includes a five-year warranty on major components, uh, transmission, most of the non-wear and tear parts. Um, so at the next meeting, um, I'll be looking for your vote to approve leasing to nineteen buses for three hundred and six thousand dollars a year, knowing that the town reimburses us two hundred and fifty thousand of that. So our cost will be fifty, uh, fifty-four thousand dollars actually each, each year, uh, to plan the budget. Facilities plan that they've adopted, the five-year facilities plan, and they had an analysis done. And in that analysis, they identified things that needed to be done over a five-year period to prevent having significant replacement cost of specific materials. So the town has budgeted for uh those, those items. And then you see the dollar amounts for each, each of those uh buildings. And if you go into each, it gives you a kind of a outline of the items that are being done at each school. So the Jenkins School, next year, starting July one, will be replacing the air-cooled condensing units. They'll be making renovations to the elevator. Um, there's asphalt roof replacement, you know, the build, the roof leaks. That we're looking at repairs, uh, it's not a full replacement. Um, and then routine concrete sidewalk repairs, uh, changing out lighting fixtures both uh on the building and pole-mounted. It's mostly changing bulbs and that sort of thing, but a lot of times that doesn't happen uh unless it's planned. And then um replacement or renewal of the gas gets around windows, so we don't have leakage issues like we have. Centure High School, we're looking at concrete sidewalk repairs, same thing with um the roof-mounted fixtures. Uh, they didn't know if we were going to be replacing the roof, so there's, there's maintenance there. Same thing with the windows. We have a, a unit on the roof, you know, the gym over the locker rooms that uh leaks badly. When it rains, water actually comes in and it's coming through the unit. Um, it's beyond repair and it doesn't work, so it needs to be replaced. There's no air change, exchange in that locker room, um, happening. As we're doing the locker room renovation, we're going to replace that, that unit as well. Um, and then also uh maintenance on the elevators uh at the high school. Center for Performing Arts, again, uh, most, it's all exterior repairs, uh, roof maintenance, just making sure that, you know, gaps and seams are, are treated appropriately, uh, repairing the asphalt, patch, patching and sealing cracks, that sort of thing. And then lastly, middle school, again, uh, we're going to work on the asphalt, striping it. We know there's some concrete uh sidewalk issues. And then, you know, just unborn roof maintenance, it's not, it's not repairs, it's just maintenance, fresh additions. Well, that's everything. Do you have any questions, if you have?
This is awesome, this is great. I mean, I think this is something that, um, just a great update for everybody to realize what's going on and, and the status of things. And I think that the last, you know, four or five years, I mean, you know, historically, you're laying out, you know, the status. So thank you for providing that. I have a couple of questions. Um, the first one, the smallest one is, it was a slide early on about to-be-purchased, um, items in the, uh,
Technology.
Said laptops, network controllers, and the flowing system, two hundred thousand, is, is, is that going to be requested capital for next year or how's that being funded?
No, it's already, again, it's a question, it's a, it's approved capital for this year, right?
Okay, that was approved capital, good. Um, the, one, because I learned the hard way one time, the locker room, that's awesome that they have that bid concluded, we can accept that.
It, it, it's already committed.
That's awesome, yeah. Um, I don't know how much impact it will have to the area outside of the locker room, but I know there is lots of what goes on in the gym in the summer. So if you haven't already, I would be sure to notify Rec about that.
Right.
Because there are regular activities that go on there. So I'm not sure how much, how much, for sure. So, I'm not sure how much, how much, for sure, should they?
You know, they, they'll have a staged area, um, outside the, um, fitness center, public company fitness center, which will be fenced off. Gyms won't be impacted, it's, it's the boys locker room. It is being, uh, everything's being torn out. partition being put up so that there'll be new entrance put in from the art, from the small gym. That'll be the girls entrance and the boys entrance will be off the other hallway.
Great, no, it's awesome, but guys, I'm looking, because I've done things here in the summer, there's a lot more goes on in the future.
I'll let, I'll let them, I'll make sure.
Um, I've heard, I've been saying, thank goodness, with their stairs, you know, the sun goes out pretty much at the end of June, maybe putting things that feels something else, so.
And it, it, that should be a pretty quick project, once, you know, demolition is a couple of days and then they'll form it toward it's probably.
Yeah, I just started with the parking, most people park in the back of Jenkins, because it's a lot of parking.
Okay, so, that's it, we're through the REC department?
I think so, yeah, okay. Um, a couple more, the, uh, the bus lease, you know what we were paying annually?
Two hundred, um, yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand, wow.
I know, it was a little bit town, but I don't know what the actual, I think it was a little.
It was a little more than the two fifty, I'm not a hundred percent certain right now. Because you had originally, you had fourteen buses that came off lease last year and five more that are coming off now. We extended those fourteen, so they, they were a little different schedule.
I'm just curious what the, I'm just curious, obviously, with the cost of, um, cars and whatnot, with the annual expenses, but it doesn't seem like it's significant.
It's not, you know, when, when you bought those buses, you bought them for eighty-eight thousand dollars. You leased them, they were eighty-eight thousand dollars each, these are a hundred and two thousand. So, um, you know, in, in four years, it's not too, too bad.
And I, I agree, I think it's great that we're doing that, obviously, just, I, I'm really impressed with what you're looking at in terms of solar on roofs. I know the difference to talk about electric buses, so just, but I, I think five years probably is, by the next bus.
I looked at electric buses, um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars each bus. I explored, there's a lot of grant money out there through the EPA. Situate isn't one of the high-profile areas that they're looking to, to reduce emissions, unfortunately, they're looking at urban areas.
I think probably five years, when this lease is, it'll take it down with the times and, you know, maybe.
Could be, you'll also have to look at infrastructure because you have to provide charging stations.
Yeah.
So, we're going to need some, some money for that as well.
Uh, all right, my last question is, um, all those buses that you went over at the ads, um, including the, um, the, the air, the air condensing units at Jenkins, Lola, that's coming out of which budget?
No, it comes out of the town.
The town's budget.
The town.
And that's because the town has a building committee that reviewed all the things you need to build. These were the things that were part of that review process.
Correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Good stuff, thank you.
You've, uh, you've just started your presentation?
You're welcome.
Actually, I can stay there for a minute, the next one, you can.
Okay.
Uh, so the next item we have is the decorative surplus, uh, I can think of that as well.
So, we have, I think, I think in your packet, you have a listing of all of you, there it is. So, there are about a hundred and eight computers, most of them are laptops. I think they're all laptops. They run anywhere from ten years old to, I think, eight years old. There's nothing, uh, newer than eight years old. What we'd like to, they, they've outlived their useful life here for the district, um, with what? So, what you have on here is their data purchase, cost when we purchased them, um, and then who we purchased them from. We would like to put them out to surplus for the town, for, for individual residents in the town on first come, first served basis. They would need to send an email to Rich Long, they're interested in a laptop, uh, they don't get to pick or choose which one or how old. And again, it's first come, first served. And once the hundred and eight laptops are gone, they're gone. We've looked at surplusing them, um, resale directly to a vendor who buys them. The amount of money that we would generate versus the, um, what, the benefit that it provides to the community, individuals who could use a laptop certainly is, is outplayed. For motion to surplus these items.
So, they, uh, if families who are interested in the laptops, they get them free of charge?
They're free of charge.
And do they need to be associated with the school or did anyone?
Anybody who lives in the community.
Yep. Besides, we're going to have a program.
Community, community paying for them ultimately, um, for, for the gap.
Like a motion to declare a technology hardware projected as surplus?
Your vote, your vote, on the paper?
Aye.
You're good, aren't you?
Welcome. You don't have to read the law.
But I've filled it up and everything. All right, uh, so this is the, uh, first evening of security, the public comment. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we will be going back and forth between people in, in the room here, most people on Zoom. So, you'll on Zoom, we'll follow the normal format, if you raise your hand, I'll ask you on mute, uh, people in the room, they can raise their hand, you want them to come up to the front. Um, I'll try to get people in order, let everyone have an opportunity. Um, I will just remind people this is a public comment, not a debate or Q and A. As things come out of the public comment, we're going to kind of decide that it's an agenda item in the future. Make sure that, you know, any issues or concerns that the public have, we, um, address through the formal, uh, presentation. So, um, first person, I saw raise their hands on the left.
Hi, this is my nice speaker.
Um, it would be better just so we can hear you.
Okay.
And then, as always, you can just come closer, just, okay. And then, as always, you can just say your name and I don't still work here.
Hi, I'm Michelle Rama, PoshA. I'm, um, I have three questions, uh, or comments, I mean, or questions, you don't have to answer them. One is, uh, oh, and I'm from Central Drive. Um, are students who go to private schools, like in, as part of this repentance withdrawals report, do those students include the ones who are sent out of district for special ed? Or are they just, um, for going to private schools? And if not, then where are the students who are out of district, sent out of district for special ed schools? Where are they accounted for in that report? So, that's one thing. And the other thing I wanted to, um, ask about was, if, I don't know. When you were talking about the, um, comparing the ROI of leasing the roofs versus buying the solar panel, panels, and I mentioned that you have the net metering and schools are not allowed to accept it? Or I was just curious about how you're deciding on that and what the goal is regarding that here. Okay, all right, so that, I have a question about that because it, like, if, if it's possible for the schools to own the solar panels and, you know, get that, that power for the schools, I think that's ideal, especially with the price of electricity going up. If you're earning net metering on that, then you're going to keep earning more money for the school, um, over time. So, and then lastly, um, I, you know, I really appreciated all the thorough reports. And I heard a lot about, um, different, differentiation and meeting students where they are and the, and I can attest to, you know, a lot of that work being done with my kids. There are questions I have about whether, um, you know, any thought has been given to giving the kids an opportunity, those who, uh, especially who have severe anxiety, um, or have school refusal issues of offering them remote dial-in to classes or other remote opportunities, since many students get tried during pandemic, were able to work remotely. And then, secondly, um, is there any consideration being given to a twice exceptional program, which we do not have and which I know many students would benefit from? This is a very complex issue and I think a lot of students are left behind, uh, who have severe needs emotionally but are also very exceptionally intelligent and, and they're kind of like not doing anything because they just refuse to. You know, so just wanted to bring those up, thank you so much for all your work, I appreciate your work.
Hi, Richard Taft, uh, seventy-four Brook Street. I, uh, I didn't really come here today to say something, except I was sitting with students a long time, they're very comfortable, so I felt like they moved. I think impressive meetings are important, that's why I can support the guys. But in listening to today's, uh, presentation, I would, I'd like to, uh, bring up a point. I've done a lot of the, a lot of research on AP, it's got a lot of thought in our town. And, um, you certainly see a trend in decreasing performance in AP, particularly math science, um, over the last period of time, five to ten years. And I think it's great that we put a lot of effort, I think it's just, it's been a lot of work, uh, to put a lot of focus on it. I think the thing, um, that you have to, that we should be careful of though is, of course, students who take AP perform better at college. That's just the nature of what you expect out of an AP student. So, trying to correlate better performance of AP by just increasing the number of people who take an AP test is not really the right thing to do. This may surprise you, since I'm the one who's, I've done a lot of this analysis, published it, shown these trends. But at the same time, just increasing the test values isn't, or the number of people taking the test isn't probably the correct response. There's a lot of reasons for that. One, it's incredibly rigorous for the students. There should have, they should be students who have reached a point in their progression where they get to an AP that you can expect them to pass it and not just be able to take the test. It's incredibly rigorous for the teachers, it requires a lot of work. And in the last year, when you looked at the, the evaluation, actual data, of course, a lot of schools had lower performance in AP, so that's not really the point. The point is, is compared to the rest of the nation or the rest of the state, we didn't perform very well at all. And we really didn't perform well in math and science. So, the questions really are, did we correct those underlying problems? Did we correct whatever it was that made it so that we only had five percent of the kids who took the chemistry AP test passed? Or twenty percent of the kids that took the biology test? Or, see, I mean, it was, it's startling because it, compared to the state averages, it was much lower. So, the thing to think about is the correct and best use of our resources. Not just necessarily to just do more testing. And the last thing to think about is grade inflation, right? Because grade inflation affects how our school is recognized. Colleges know we have grade inflation. So, just, again, having kids take an AP test, giving them a good class, a good grade, and so they get a higher GPA. I'm not saying this is explicitly done, just saying the implicit expectation of these teachers is they want them to pass, they want them to do better. And so, you have these possibilities that occur when, then the goal is, is, I think the number, I couldn't read it back, where it was, seven hundred and twenty tests. I think last year's test count was like four hundred and eighty. I think in our high, high peak year, it was around six hundred, five hundred and eighty-five, or something like that. So, to go from around less than five hundred to seven hundred tests, if that was the number, again, I could read it from where I was sitting, just sounds like an overreaction to something where we should be backfilling the things that we found were bottoming and letting our students get to the point. Because AP isn't in and of itself, AP testing isn't in and of itself the goal, right? Goal is that they're good learners, right? And if they fail an AP test, they may come away with it saying, you know, I'm really not good at biology. Well, let's not necessarily put expectation outcome, you want them to be good at one. Thank you.
Per Gunther, uh, took your place, had three kids in the school system. I want to thank you for going to the hybrid model. I also didn't know you weren't compensated, but you were, and I do appreciate your work.
It's all pain and suffering.
Yeah, well, I do appreciate your work. I've had conversations with Superintendent Burkett, so, um, I appreciate those as well. I want to piggyback off the AP as well. Couple of months ago, the Massachusetts rankings came out. And it would be good moving forward, and this isn't to beat you up, Superintendent Burkett, but maybe six months to twelve months to look at where Situate is, then where they are now. Because if you look at all the South Shore towns from Plymouth to Quincy over into Whitman, Hans to Anover, we actually were lower than most of the school districts, the scoring, and that is out there, Google it or DuckDuckGo, you see that? Because I, I know there was some discussion on that when it came out. So, it would be good, I guess, to set our baseline now and then in six, twelve months, whatever, testing is going to see where we are. I think that would be a good measure of how we're doing. Also, um, is there possibility on the next meeting for people who show up in person to get, uh, baked goods and coffee, like the seaside chat? Joke. Laugh.
How's the family like?
Very good, thanks for taking it home. Also, piggybacking on the slides, I don't know if this projector can be used in the future as you tweak things, but most of them we can see. I know people at home can see them and that's great, but say, we're tough to see some of the stats and numbers. I'm not sure if this can be used, figure the room differently, just a suggestion. Also, on your SCL, your social emotional learning, I don't know if anybody saw the comments by the teacher in this middle school or a master. I can bring her name up because it was published in the Boston Globe. She brought up some concerning, uh, what she stated, uh, some things, uh, these quotes that she said, I'm paraphrasing, but she did say in the article that, uh, depression and lack of motivation is three times what it usually is. I don't know if the baseline is ten kids out of a hundred normally, and now it's thirty, or if it was twenty baseline and now it's sixty out of a hundred, that's a little concerning. The fact that we have, uh, more consoers in most districts, which is great to read in that article, but maybe that's something in two to four weeks, the school committee and yourself will come back and say, we talked to Laura about that. What is she saying? I didn't hear anything about it tonight, maybe in the next few meetings. Also, this is the political season in Situate, this is my twentieth year in Situate. This one seems more heated than most, um, maybe because of, uh, social media. Unfortunately, there was some theft of political signs in the past week. There has been some evidence turned into the police department and it is coming back to students that had done it. We're still waiting for more evidence to be collected, but I would think that part of all of your, uh, love inclusion trust, which is great, maybe students should also be, uh, told that during political, uh, election seasons that no matter who you're going for, no matter who you're supporting, doing that is not right, you know? And it's just, it's unfortunate, but that's where the evidence is pointing, based on some video cameras and some evidence on lawns. We'll see where that happens, but it's just my suggestion. If we have all this SCL and DEI, you know, implementation of learning, maybe that's something that could be brought up to, you know, make, like you were just saying, forty-five minutes or an hour ago, better students, thank you.
So nice to hear your faces in my first, um, my, it's Kate Parting, I live on, I live in, and I have two kids, I'm Cushing. You are shown to see three teachers tonight that my kids have had the absolute pleasure of learning from this year. I mean, it does not get better than Katie Martin. And, uh, I can just say, let me think, from the top down, that's how we get good teachers and keep good teachers. So, I appreciate what you said tonight, Mr. Burkett said tonight, um. And I just wanted to ask a quick question and clarify two things and I, um, one thing really, and if Mr. Burkett can't answer me tonight, that's completely fine. But as we go forward, I guess, I'm wondering, you said we're doing the exit interviews as people are leaving, um. And we haven't done exit interviews up until now. And so, I'm assuming that at some point, the assertion that people have left because of our DEI stances and the progression that we made this year, that is not true and there's no way that we could attract that by now. My other comment I wanted to make in regards to the political season this year, I would hope that it starts at home. I hope we're all encouraging our students to get involved. I hope we're encouraging our students not to make false accusations. But, uh, as we move forward, I think that, you know, we've talked about, Mr. Burkett said something earlier, if you send your kids to central public schools that we loved. If you send your kids to such a public schools, they'll be loved. And I hope that we can teach them that in this political season, it's not, doesn't necessarily need to be filled with hate. Um, and we can all move and see the progress that was so evident today. So, thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
Uh, seeing no other hands raised, here are the senior person. Uh, it's the end of public comment. Uh, Mr. Gunther, to your point, uh, I'm gonna say this, unfortunately, this is a part of the game, um, since this is the first meeting, this is you as well as everybody. Uh, this is the first meeting we're back, getting, continuing to look through various interviews, making sure that we got the best, not only the people on the Zoom, but also the people in the room. So thank you for that feedback. It's, it's good to hear.
Right, I have to go. It was about the slides. The slides we, uh, posted online on the website.
Yep. Any of the slides that are requested?
I just, I, I, I don't know if it's, 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 I can't see the slides. Wait, wait, wait. No, kidding.
We do not have any minutes to approve tonight. So, a couple of more things to the, uh, minutes. There wasn't correspondence to the school committee. Is there any other business that the committee might have grabbed that? Uh, so our next, uh, next meeting, um, is on May ninth, we're continuing to do this hybrid, uh, model going forward. Uh, we'll have a superintendent's evaluation, um, as part of that, uh, meeting. Um, at this time, we're gonna entertain a motion to enter executive session. This will end the public session of our meeting tonight. So, I will make the whole, if there are any questions, per meeting number two. So, I actually have to go over, so, uh, my guest, okay, the question?
Yes.
Yes, yes, someone?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I'll be right back.